Good evening. If everyone would please take their seats, we're going to get started with our meeting. Everyone, please take your seats. Thank you. Good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, November the 12th, 2024. I'd like to welcome everyone who's here present in our historic city council chambers. I'd also like to welcome everyone who's listening on our listening audience at WCBU and our audience watching on cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Graebb. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a pretty heavy-duty agenda tonight. We're going to ask you to get us started, Madam Clerk.
We are at proclamations.
We have four proclamations tonight. The first recognizes Native American Indian Heritage Month. And we have Robert Schef, otherwise known as Wolf Eyes, here with us tonight. If you would join us at the front podium. Councilwoman Denise Jackson will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians, Alaskan Native peoples, and indigenous peoples. And whereas the contributions of Native American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. Their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich history throughout the United States. And whereas the name Peoria derives from the Algonquin language spoken by the Peoria tribe of Indians of Oklahoma. While Peoria originally meant comes carrying a pack on his back, a more modern translation has defined it as to dream with the help of man at toe. And whereas we recognize the Native Americans who lived in Illinois and contributed to their community's cultural legacy. We acknowledge those who made their home here first. The Sauk, the Meskwaki, the Porowatomi, Kickapoo, Winnebago, Cahokia, Cascasquia, and Peoria, among many others. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as Native American Indian Heritage Month. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby acknowledge November as Native American Indian Heritage Month in Peoria, Illinois, dated this 12th day of November 2024 A.D.
How does she do with those pronunciations?
I give her a B+.
All right.
Some of the words are kind of hard, but you also look, the Palawami was also part of the native of the Peoria Lake, also part of the Peoria, and also peeking even on the other side of East Peoria. It's all Native American land over there, too. People look up the histories. So again, I want to thank you, Mayor, Dick County Council. You're probably wondering why I'm wearing a red handprint on my face. Well, if y'all look it up, it's M-M-I-W-S-K. Chief, please listen. Murder, missing, individuals, women, kids, sisters, even here in Peoria, Illinois, still missing, kidnapped, cases swept under the rug, not being looked at, not being monitored, no Amber Alerts, nothing, zero, nada. Over and now, even in America, we are now fighting more than ever. If you look at my vehicle, there's handprints, red handprints over my vehicle, representing my ancestors, my sisters, my grandma, everybody else. That's been kidnapped, murdered, but nothing ever mentioned, pictures on the news about our kids missing or kidnapped. That's one issue we've been dealing with. Another issue we've been dealing with is justice. Even here in Peoria, as a Native American, I still not getting justice. I was still not being protected and served. When I asked officers for help, they tell me they can't help me until something happens. Why do I need to have something happen to me before I get help? I have my, what is it we'll be praying again this year? Destroyed. Hello? Destroyed. Got threatened. Don't do it. But next year, I'm going to do it. We invite you guys all tomorrow. Bradley University is having a Native American speech where you're having the Eagle Ridge Drums coming at 4:30 to 5:00 o'clock at Bradley University. We're also having a woman doing a live question and answer kind of thing. We're also having Bradley's now more and more influence on the Native American history because a lot of the Bradley students are Native American indigenous people, too. So I'm glad Bradley finally jumped on board with that. But again, it's not being mentioned in the news. We don't know why, but I want to advertise that to you guys that that is there tomorrow. One more thing, too, for Native Americans, I try to fight for every year. It ain't just here in Peoria. We still, some of us don't have rights to vote. Some of us don't even have rights to even speak our own language, like Spanish, Latinos, and speak their language. I can't speak Cherokee. I got told I can't. So I had to learn English. So another thing we're trying to change is bring back the Native American culture. Why can't we have justice? Why can't we be protected like everybody else? This is America. One more thing, a couple more things real quick. I am not an immigrant. I am an American. We were here first. Why should we have to leave America for anything that we were here first? So in honor, I want to be close real quick. I have a good friend who died today. That was a big part of my life. My mom, my grandma raised me, teach me about my heritage and my culture. But today, I lost the best thing in my life this morning. Her name was Jane, and she probably influenced my culture, my heritage. So I ask you city council members today, even mayor and any other city officials here today, please acknowledge us as human beings. Because we are, we put money in your businesses, we put money on the streets, we put money here in Peoria, also all over towns. So please, respect us as we respect you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Wolf Eyes, thank you for representing the Native people. Our next proclamation recognizes the Community Festival of Nativities. And we have Father Theophanis Roush from All Saints Greek Orthodox, excuse me, Orthodox Church. And we have Donald Mayer, First Counselor and the Peoria, Illinois Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Gentlemen, can you come forth? So I might have mispronounced your names. Would you please pronounce your names?
My name's Donald Mayer. You actually did quite well, Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, good. Thank you.
We're very close. It's Theophanis Roush.
Okay, thank you. Another B+.
A-.
Okay, B-. Okay.
A-.
Don't be too hard on yourself.
The proclamation reads, whereas the story of the nativity and the events surrounding the birth of Jesus are important in religious celebrations of Christmas. And whereas the St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Church, Holy Family Catholic Church, All Saints Greek Orthodox Church, Peoria Heights Christian Church, Mount Harley Community Church, and the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints have joined together to present the Ninth Annual Community Festivities, Festival of Nativities as a free gift to the community. And whereas this unique exhibit aims to provide a peaceful place for individuals and families to reflect upon the birth of Christ this Christmas season. And whereas visitors will see more than 750 nativities on display, including St. Mary's Historic Cathedral Nativity Scene and Diane Legg's 3,000-piece Fontanini Collection. Whereas the theme this year is taken from the artwork of a new artist, Brooklyn Swinson, titled "All Is Bright." Guests will also enjoy performances from local musicians, children's activities, and a live nativity. And whereas the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints is hosting this year's event at their place of worship, 3,700 West Reservoir Boulevard on Thursday, December 5th, from 3:00 to 9:00 PM, Friday and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, through Sunday, December 8th, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the Community Festival of Nativities in Peoria, Illinois.
I'll go first, I guess. Mayor Ali, thank you so much. We are really grateful for the acknowledgement and support that you provide in the city council as well. It's a real honor to be here and receive this proclamation. The Community Festival of Nativities, if you haven't experienced it, it's just a wonderful event. The proclamation really said it best. It's an opportunity for the whole community to come together in a spirit of unity at this special time of season where we celebrate the birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ. And it's precisely what he would have, is this unity in a time where there's frankly too much division. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council, for being good examples and supporting that. I personally have friends who, just as a side anecdotal note, who bring people and family members from outside of the city annually. It really has become a wonderful tradition. So it benefits the community as well. It's a rare win-win, right, in these days? So thank you so much. We can't express our gratitude enough for...
That's great. Father Roush?
Thank you. And to echo Donald, thank you, Mayor Ali, and to the council for this proclamation. And personally, I'm a newcomer to Peoria in the past year. And my family and I have been very, very moved by how welcoming of a community it is in general. But I think about, at our parish, we have many people from different countries and backgrounds from all over the world. I mean, not just Greece, the Middle East, Russia, Ukraine, all these different places. And in talking with some of them, they still have family in these areas. The fact that we can do a festival like this as Christians is not possible in a lot of the places that their families currently are. So the fact that as a city, we can do this, and our own city council is supporting us and acknowledging our faith and allowing us to share Christ in this way, it's really, really beautiful, and it's a gift to all of us. So thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Our next proclamation recognizes National Apprenticeship Week. And we have Michelle DeVore, Director of Workforce Employer Initiatives at Illinois Central College, and Kelly Bay, the Manager of Workforce Apprenticeships at Illinois Central College, my former employer. Come forth, ladies. Whereas National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its 10th anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role of registered, that registered apprenticeships play in our country, allowing apprentices to earn while they learn, and preparing a pathway to high-quality jobs in Peoria and across the nation. And whereas registered apprenticeship programs enable employers to develop, train, and expand their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs. And whereas registered apprenticeships expand opportunities in our workforce for individuals who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality, and provide a path for all qualified individuals to become apprentices and contribute to America's industries. And whereas the City of Peoria recognizes that registered apprenticeships can help improve job quality and create access to sustainable jobs for all while addressing some of our nation's pressing workforce challenges, such as rebuilding our infrastructure, seeking supply chain solutions, supporting a clean energy workforce, modernizing our cybersecurity response, and responding to care economy issues. Now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, and on behalf of the Peoria City Council, do hereby acknowledge November 17th through November 23rd as National Apprenticeship Week in Peoria, Illinois. DeVore?
Thank you, Mike, Mayor Ali, and thank you, city council members. We are honored to represent Illinois Central College and speak on behalf of apprenticeships. Since launching in 2018, ICC's Workforce Development Department has been developing and expanding apprenticeships programs to support both employers and students. To date, we've enrolled over 180 apprentices with 35 partners, 35 employers partnering with us across manufacturing and information technology sectors. We started with just five registered apprenticeships, and we've now expanded to 11. We've added two to our manufacturing list, and we have actually grown into the healthcare field. And we've added registered apprenticeships in our Certified Nursing Assistant, our Licensed Practical Nurse, our Registered Nurse, and our Surgical Technology Programs. Our goal is to continue expanding these opportunities across all sectors and to work closely with employers to design customized apprenticeship programs that meet their unique needs. By offering flexible, tailored solutions, we're able to ensure that both students and employers have the tools they need for success. So apprenticeships, we believe, are the best model of education we can provide for our community. They uniquely focus on both the employer and the student, creating partnerships that build a foundation for lasting success. Through this model, employers have the flexibility and autonomy to select the related technical instruction provided by Illinois Central College that can align perfectly with their industry needs, ensuring that their incoming or incumbent workers receive the most relevant and impactful training. This approach helps strengthen businesses and enriches our local economy.
Equally important, apprenticeships are life-changing for students. I worked in career services for eight years, and it always felt a little backwards. So we would educate students, and at the end, we'd try to find them a job after they've gone through education. Well, apprenticeships changes all of that. It, unlike the traditional educational pathways, they come with a heavy weight of student loan debt oftentimes, and apprenticeship fixes all that. The employer assists with the educational costs, thus reducing the student loan burden for these students. And they provide them with a wage while they're going through their related technical instruction. This allows the student to focus on their education and at the same time achieve a positive career outcome that positions them for long-term success. The benefits also extend beyond the individual and the employer. They ripple throughout our entire community. For people from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, apprenticeships are a pathway out of poverty, an opportunity to break generational cycles and create a future full of hope and stability. By investing in apprenticeship, we foster a system where both the employer and the student grow in unison. Employers find dedicated, well-trained talent, students build promising careers, and our economy, our community gains a steady pipeline of skilled professionals contributing to a thriving local economy. Thank you.
Thank you for changing lives through apprenticeships. Our next proclamation recognizes National Community Foundation Week. And we have Mark Roberts, who is the Community Foundation of Central Illinois President and CEO. Welcome, Mark. I've asked Councilman Tim Regenbach to share this proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas community members, neighborhoods, institutions, and organizations in the City of Peoria have historically benefited from the ongoing generosity of donations from families, business, community foundations. And whereas the Community Foundation of Central Illinois, also known as CFCI, has granted $140 million in grants to nonprofit organizations since its inception in 1985. And whereas one of the most significant ways to ensure a strong community, economic vitality, and educational success is through the active presence of a community foundation. In the 2024 fiscal year, thanks to the generosity of donors, CFCI distributed over 800 grants, totaling $5,151,355, with a focus on ending hunger, equipping and developing a strong workforce, and fostering the local arts community. And whereas CFCI has numerous funds and initiatives, including the Women's Fund of Central Illinois, that ensures the continued support of programs for women and girls. And whereas our community is fortunate to have the Community Foundation of Central Illinois as a resource for collective giving, their dedicated staff and volunteers work tirelessly every day to inspire philanthropy, improve the quality of life, strengthen nonprofits, foster collaboration, and provide leadership in Central Illinois. Now, therefore, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, on behalf of the Peoria City Council, does hereby acknowledge November 12th through 18th as Community Foundation Week in Peoria, Illinois.
To Roberts.
Well, thank you, Mayor Ali, and thank you, Councilman, and thank you to the rest of the members of the council as well for this recognition. On behalf of our Board of Directors and all of the stakeholders and the staff of the Community Foundation, it's my pleasure to accept this proclamation on behalf of Community Foundation Week. Across the country, over 900 community foundations are working every day to connect people who care with causes that matter, and they work to build strong and vibrant communities like our Central Illinois community. We are celebrating this week the role of those community foundations nationwide in supporting essential services like healthcare, and food banks, and domestic violence shelters, and volunteer fire departments, and many other organizations. In 2023, these foundations collectively granted over $30 billion back into their communities to impact all manners of quality of life, including the arts, and education, and health, and human services, and the environment, and disaster relief, and the list goes on and on. Locally, as the councilman just noted a few moments ago, the Community Foundation granted over $5.1 million last year back into our community, and we're very proud of that over $140 million that we've granted back into this community since our inception in 1985. We are growing rapidly, and I want the community to know that we are now the fifth-largest community foundation in the state of Illinois by asset size, and we are the largest community foundation south of the suburbs. We are the largest downstate community foundation by asset size. Why I tell you that, the larger that we get in that respect, the more impact we are able to make via grant-making on this community. So we're making an increasingly significant impact on the area through these programs, as Councilman mentioned, food insecurity, and workforce readiness, and issues impacting women and girls. And we grant hundreds of thousands of dollars each year in scholarships to local students. And along with our generous donors and our fund holders and our volunteers, we're proud to play this role. We know at community foundations, by aggregating the resources of individuals and families and corporations and others in our communities, we can collectively address critical community issues. And by strategically working with so many others through partnerships, we're helping to pave the way towards an ever-improving quality of life. And we're doing that not only today, but for decades to come. And as I wrap up, a quick aside, in 2025, it will be our 40th anniversary as an organization, and I'm going to ask you all to stay tuned as we finish planning and start to announce really interesting initiatives. really interesting initiatives and interesting grants that will help to celebrate that 40th anniversary. So on behalf of all the folks that I've talked about before, and on behalf of everyone in this community, we thank you for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Roberts.[613.16][613.16][applause]
We have three town items. The first item, 24-321, is a communication. I'm sorry, let's back up. Let's do the approval of the minutes.
Okay. Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the Special City Council and Town Board meeting held on October 15th, 2024, the minutes of the City Council meeting held on October 22nd, 2024, and the minutes of the Special City Council meeting held October 29th, 2024, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Now we're on to the town items. 24-321 is a communication from the Town Officials Budget Committee with a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2024, and ending March 31st, 2025, for the General Assistance Fund of the Town of the City of Peoria, Peoria County, and State of Illinois, in the amount of $1,022,190.
Trustee Riegenbach?
Move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by Trustee Jackson. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-322 is a communication from the Town Officials Budget Committee with a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2024, and ending March 31st, 2025, for the General Fund and the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund of the Town of the City of Peoria, Peoria County, and State of Illinois, in the amount of $356,000.
Trustee Riegenbach?
Move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by Trustee Jackson. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-323 is a request from the Town Officials to approve the October 2024 actual expenditures and to approve the November 2024 anticipated expenditures for the Town of the City of Peoria.
Trustee Riegenbach?
Move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by Trustee Jackson. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're on to the consent agenda. 24-324 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request from the CDBG Public Services Commission to approve the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Public Service Findings Recommendations in the amount of $270,000. 24-325 is a communication with a request to approve the reallocation of administrative funds from the Illinois Housing Development Authority to the Emergency Repair Program in the amount of $15,000. 24-326 is a communication with a request to approve a purchase with Rarick Pacific Company for 702 new 95-gallon garbage carts for the replacement in inventory in an amount not to exceed $41,897. 24-327 is a communication with a request to approve the purchase of one vehicle in an amount not to exceed $30,000. 24-328 is a communication with a request to approve a professional services agreement with PISO Habitat Restoration in an amount not to exceed $855,000 for the native vegetation green infrastructure maintenance. 24-329 is a communication with a request to approve a resolution regarding the approval of closed session minutes. 24-330 is a communication with a request for the following. A, approve a local agency agreement for the jurisdictional transfer of Glen Avenue from 312 feet west of North University Street, easterly to the east edge of the pavement of the North Sheridan Road, from the county highway system to the municipal street system. And B, adopt an ordinance approving the transfer of a portion of Glen Avenue from 312 feet west of North University Street, easterly to the east edge of the pavement of North Sheridan Road, from the county highway system to the municipal street system. 24-331 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $148,060 against specified parcels as described as in Exhibit A for tax year 2024 for the Knoxville Junction Special Service Area. 24-312 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance modifying Section 2-350E1 regarding the Public Safety Employee Benefits Act. 24-332 is a communication with a request to approve the site application for a Class B Restaurant 50% Food/Liquor License with On-Site Consumption and Retail Sale of Alcohol for Brinzos Pizza Plaza West LLC, doing business as Brinzos Pizza &amp; Bar, at 7713 North Orange Prairie Road, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. 24-333 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to deny the site application for a CG Gas Station Convenience Store Liquor License with a retail sale of alcohol for Trace Mart Inc., doing business as Shell Number Six, at 3903 West Bearing Trace, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to deny. 24-334 is a communication with a request to deny the site application for a Class CG Gas Station Convenience Store Liquor License with a retail sale of alcohol for Sterling Avenue Mart Inc., doing business as Shell Number Nine, at 4709 North Sterling, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to deny. 24-335 is a communication with a request to deny the site application for a Class CG Gas Station Convenience Store Liquor License with a retail sale of alcohol for North Knoxville Avenue Mart Inc., doing business as Shell Number One, at 4310 North Knoxville, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to deny. 24-336 is a communication with a request to deny the site application for a Class CG Gas Station Convenience Store Liquor License with a retail sale of alcohol for 1900 North Knoxville Inc., doing business as Shell Number Two, at 1900 North Knoxville, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to deny. 24-337 is a communication with a request to deny the site application for a Class CG Gas Station Convenience Store Liquor License with a retail sale of alcohol for 710 Peoria Mart Inc., doing business as Shell Number Three, at 710 West Detweiler, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to deny. 24-338 is a communication with a request to deny the site application for a Class CG Gas Station Convenience Store Liquor License with a retail sale of alcohol for 1108 Main Street Mart Inc., doing business as Shell Number Four, at 1108 West Main, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to deny. 24-339 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Downtown Advisory Commission with a request to concur of Dorsey Hill. 24-340 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the East Village Growth Cell Advisory Committee with a request to concur of Kurt Dirk King. 24-341 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Housing Commission with a request to concur of Alexander Ortega. 24-342 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Mayor's Advisory Committee for Citizens with Disabilities with a request to concur of Mandar Pedakar. 24-343 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Tourism Reserve Fund Board with a request to concur of Michael P. Vespa. 24-344 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Transportation Commission with a request to concur of Imadeldin Mohammed. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Okay, that was a lot of reading. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there items to remove from consent? Councilman Velpula?
Madam, 24-324.
Can you read that again?
24-324.
324?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other items? Councilman Velpula? I'm a Vespa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 24-343.
Thank you. Councilmember Seer?
If there's no more, thank you, Madam Mayor. If there's no more numbers to get to be pulled off, I move to approve the balance.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda of those remaining items. We have a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-324 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request from the CDBG Public Services Commission to approve the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Public Service Findings Recommendations in the amount of $270,000.
Councilmember Velpula?
Madam Mayor, I would like to abstain because I serve on the Board of Central for Prevention of Abuse.
Okay, understood. Can I get a motion to approve that item? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Okay, if there's no questions, please cast your ballots on that item. Motion passes with one abstention. Madam Clerk?
24-343 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Tourism Reserve Fund Board with a request to concur of Michael P. Vespa.
Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an appointment for me, so I'm just going to abstain from this. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve that item? Moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one abstention. Vespa. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
We are at first readings. 24-345 is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to receive and file the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 31 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to stormwater utility.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our Finance Director, Kyle Crady.
The ordinance in front of you tonight is for the first reading. This is to maintain, was in the existing budget document that's in front of you tonight, to freeze the CPI increase for stormwater fees for the 2025 budget year. The council has been freezing the rates back to 2021 levels because of the existing fund balance in the fund, and staff is making that recommendation again this year. And so if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Are there questions? This is a receive and file item. Did you have questions? Councilmember Seer?
No, just want to move to receive and file.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. The next number was incorrectly numbered. It's actually 24-346 instead of 34-346. So it's 24-346, Communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to approve an amendment to the guidelines to the East Village TIF Housing Program to reduce the property owner match for owner-occupied properties.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn the floor over to our Community Development Director, Mr. Doolin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager. Thank you, Council. The item in front of you is, the East Village Growth Cell Board had met about a month ago. We were trying to, they were trying to come up with ways to utilize the housing program that's available. If you remember correctly, the East Village Growth Cell was created with a housing component where a certain amount of increment goes back into a fund that homeowners and landlords can utilize for property repairs. The program's been very successful in your packet. You'll see all the different households that have received positive benefit from it. But the Growth Cell Committee just wanted to find ways to keep that momentum going forward, so they proposed some changes to lower the match a little bit for a couple different categories. The major component households with 0% to 80% AMI and 55 years or older could have exterior repairs to their program without a match. Really what we're trying to target there is people who live in the East Bluff who might be on social security, might not have the disposable income, but have lived in the area and want to make improvements to their household. And then 0% to 100% of age, 120% AMI, if you're not at that age group, lower the match to 25% to get more utilization of the program as well. So with that, I would also probably defer it over to Councilman Riegenbach because I'm sure he would like to say more words about it as well.
Yes. Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Doolin, for the recap of that. Economic development and TIFs are often things that we get a lot of phone calls and emails about. They're oftentimes misunderstood, they're oftentimes very complicated, but let me tell you, ladies and gentlemen, they work. This East Village Growth Cell TIF helped facilitate OSF's building of the Jump Trading Center, which is a landmark in the medical community now and in the East Bluff. And if you look at page, well, it's either page 8 of 9 or page 294 of 562, depending on your perspective. It gives you a breakdown of the rehab projects that have taken place since this TIF was put in place. Just to recap briefly, and I swear I'll be brief, this TIF has a component to it that allows the homeowners in it to apply for a grant for up to 50% of exterior improvements. We've had nearly 100 people, 100 homeowners in the East Bluff avail themselves of this and afforded over $600,000 to those homeowners. So this is putting money right back into our heritage neighborhoods and something that the council has talked about, that is a priority for the council going back for years, and I'm just so proud of the way this has worked and continues to work. And with these enhancements, it'll make it even more accessible for those who actually need the assistance. So I'm proud to move for the approval on this item.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the rundown, Director Doolin, too. I think this is great. It gives a break to people, you know, our older constituents and people who are middle-class and poor and can't afford to match these funds. So I think this is a great move, and I'm proud to vote yes on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Doolin. I think you're going to stick around. Madam Clerk?
24-347 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request for the following. A, approve $445,000 in Home Investment Partnership Community Housing Development Organization Funds to Habitat for Humanity Greater Peoria for the construction of new single-family homes located in 61605. And B, approve $500,000 in Community Project Funding Grant Funds through the Department of Housing and Urban Development to Habitat for Humanity Greater Peoria for the construction of new single-family homes located in 61605. And we'll need separate motions on each, please.
Director Doolin?
Thank you, Mayor. The item in front of you is very, very exciting for the city, for 61605, and the entire community. So I'll be brief, but kind of, you know, tell a full story. Multiple years ago, the City of Peoria approved the land bank through a joint -- Multiple years ago, the City of Peoria approved the land bank through a joint effort with the Illinois Housing Development Authority. Through that, the goal is really to acquire parcels with the hope of spurring additional affordable housing in the future. Fast forward a little bit. We, through Congressman Bustos' office and American Rescue Plan money, were able to finally demolish McKinley and Harrison School in six one six oh five. Then fast forward a little more. Churchview Gardens, a joint effort from Pivotal Housing and PRI Opportunities Foundation, got added tax credits to build affordable rental housing in six one six oh five, which would be some of the first new construction that South Village Tiff has seen in a very long time. And so with that, you know, the biggest feedback we heard from residents are that's great to have additional affordable rental housing in the community, but when can we see possible affordable homeownership opportunities? We've had a wonderful partnership with Habitat for Humanity throughout the years. For the most part, they've concentrated a lot of their efforts in the North Valley and the East Bluff. And I think if you drive in those areas and you see the new construction, you can see what a wonderful job that they have done in those neighborhoods. Leanne Schmickel is here, I'm sure can answer any specific questions you have. But when we started this discussion, we wanted to see what we could do with the McKinley property. It leaves a pretty big footprint, and Matt Smith has done a very good job as our land bank manager to try to acquire other property around there, too. And then we got a $500,000 earmark. That's item B from Congressman Sorenson's office specifically for this project. So this first phase should be able to put about six houses specifically where McKinley used to be. We're in discussions, and Habitat is working very, very hard to try to secure some additional funding to do phases two and three in your packet and just continuing to build homeownership opportunities in that area for people who want to own their homes and live in that area and build that generational wealth that comes with homeownership. I think that, I also want to let everyone know that we're hoping to have a public meeting about this in January, where you'll specifically have opportunity to learn about Habitat, learn up how to sign up for their programs, learn how you might be able to join their program, to get one of these households and what you have to do for their program requirements. We'll also get some feedback from the neighborhood on some design elements and just let them know about the project. And that'll likely be in January, as with HUD funds, it often takes much longer than we would like due to environmental reviews. So we had hoped to get started this winter, this late part of this year, but probably won't get started until the early part of next year. So this will help us get through phase one of the project, and then hopefully we'll see continued and more growth in the future down there as well.
Very exciting, Director. Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank Habitat and the city for finally getting together in this collaboration and one that we hope will be just the first of many affordable housing programs in six one six oh five. We have had lots of people interested in purchasing homes, people who are interested in staying in the central part of the city. So I'm just excited, and I, as I said before, we are happy to see this partnership move forward. And as you already know, Director Doolin, we have numerous parcels of land in and around that area that are just waiting for opportunities to build homes and put families in those areas finally. So with that, Madam Mayor, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve item A.
Seconded by Councilmember Rigganbach. Additional comments? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to express my admiration to everyone involved in this collaborative process. Special kudos to my colleague from the First District, Councilmember Jackson. I know that taking down McKinley and the old Harrison were a priority of yours when you were first elected. So promises made, promises kept. So again, thank you to everyone making this happen. This is a game changer, and I'm proud to support it. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Rigganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What a great project. And I see Leanne Schmickel sitting quietly in the background, but I think she deserves a big shout out for her leadership at Habitat all these years. The work they've done in the East Bluff neighborhood, in the North Valley. You drive through there and you just see the impact that's having. I noticed, Director Doolin, you mentioned that the neighborhood wants to have some input on design elements. Well, I can tell you Habitat is always in touch with those requests. Director Schmickel and I had a big discussion one time about the pillars, the posts on the front porches, and we decided we liked the chunky ones better, you know? So might not be exactly the architectural term you use, but we knew what we meant. And I think it's amazing that you're going to have some workshops for residents to explain the qualifications and the steps that they need to apply for that because this is clearly a lot of houses and coming in an area that hasn't experienced this before. So hats off. Thank you Habitat for your commitment, and thank you Congressman Sorenson and Bustos for their leadership in getting these funds to us.
Very well said, Councilman. Why don't we have you stand up, Director? Leanne, let's give her a hand. Thank you, we appreciate you.
I can't sit back there and not talk. Thank you so very much. But I want to tell you, we have even more exciting news. We are going to be receiving some tax credits from a large donation we received. And I didn't even understand the tax credits through the Illinois system, but I do now. But we have probably seven hundred to nine hundred thousand extra dollars coming for this area. And so, and I just want to thank everybody. The city's always great to work with. We appreciate everything. We are so excited. I mean, we're hoping for a large, a large development of affordable homes. And I'm sorry I interrupted, but I had to tell you, thank you. And thank you for the acknowledgement. It is a, sometimes a lonely position because we have little staff and a lot of work. But this is a wonderful thing. And the last thing I want to say is my father taught at McKinley School and is an all-ED for over three decades. And I just figured it out tonight, and he passed in 2020. And he would be so excited about the linkage that his daughter now is helping build on that school grounds where he taught for so many years. So that was a god moment.
That's great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Council, Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo the sentiments of everyone, but I definitely want to commend the collaboration. Now, I will say I have about eight bricks that my friends that grew up in the McKinley area asked me to give for them because it definitely represents change. And change is definitely needed. When I think about having grown up on the south side of Peoria or six one six oh five and what it used to be, and definitely the opportunity what it has to become, I'm excited. And not only excited for the residents, but excited to hear that there's going to be input, you know? We're not just doing cookie cutter homes and, you know, you just pick one. Giving them an opportunity to have some input and not just affordable homes, but quality homes. And that's what all residents of Peoria deserve. So again, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for moving things forward in Peoria. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, with that said, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Please cast your ballots. For item A. Motion passes unanimously. Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Rigganbach. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Director Doolin. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash three forty-eight is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request to approve the sole-source purchase of Gray Key Forensic Mobile Device plus Satellite Unit with three advanced licenses and premier bundle with unlimited downloads in the amount of $36,276.33. And this item requires a two-thirds vote of council members voting, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager. What you have in front of you now is the purchase of a Gray Key Forensic Mobile Device. In very short terms, basically, this is not a want for us, this is more of a need. We have two currently. This one would be a third one, which would be a mobile device that we can take off-site. But what we've seen is we, our cases are being developed and closed using the data that we are extracting off mobile devices such as cell phones and tablets. Last year, we had over three hundred and fifty of them that we've had to do. And we have one detective, basically two detectives to deal with this. So we needed to get another one, one that's mobile. So these are, basically, we're taking the fingerprints, digital fingerprints off of our technology, cell phones and tablets. And it's an essential item for us while we do investigations.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Etchavaria? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Chief, I think you have another one? Oh, okay, sorry. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash three forty-nine is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request to approve a sole-source purchase of one 2024 Chrysler Pacifica Turing van from a no-bid procurement source in the amount of approximately $40,222 to exchange for a Ram Pro Master Cargo Van from the IS Department. And this, this item requires a two-thirds vote of council members voting, no less than six votes.
Chief?
Yeah, so our technology lieutenant and officer need a van to carry equipment back and forth, lights for squad cars, computers, et cetera. Our chief information officer, Jessica McKean, has that vehicle. She needs a different vehicle where she can transport more people than equipment. And so we're going to do a trade with her and our department. We'll be able to, they'll still be able to have access to that van. So very simply, we need a vehicle to transport equipment.
Understood. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question, Mr. Manager. These two items, just to make sure everybody understands, where does the funding come from?
The funds are in the police department's budget.
For both cars? Thank you. Move to approve, Madam Mayor.
For one car. One car's already been purchased.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash three five zero is a communication from the City Manager and Chief Information Officer with a request to approve a sole-source contract with Heartland Business Systems for professional services to convert proprietary document types in one solution to a readable and searchable format in the amount of $40,850. And this item requires a two-thirds vote of council members voting, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. We have our chief information officer, Jessica McKean, here to talk about this item and the reason that we're here as well.
So one solution is a software that we no longer use and we don't pay support costs on it. So we're trying to extract all that data into a searchable format that we can maintain and keep secure. So that's what this is. And Heartland Business Services has the capability to do that, that we can't do internally.
Questions for Director McKean? Direct, excuse me, Councilmember Allen?
Move for approval.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash three fifty-one is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request for the following. A, accept the Tobacco Prevention and Enforcement Program Grant from the Department of Human Services in the amount of $17,034. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2024-2025 biennial budget relating to the general fund to recognize the receipt of grant funding from the Department of Human Services, providing tobacco enforcement in the amount of $17,034. And item B requires a two-thirds vote of council members voting, no less than six votes, and we need separate votes, please.
Okay, other people's money, it looks like. Chief?
Yes, we're bringing some more grant funds in front of you today. We do approximately three hundred checks of a hundred tobacco license holders a year. So we like to, we educate and check the tobacco license holders. This pays for personnel, the product that's purchased, confidential source, et cetera. You'll be happy to know that out of three hundred, it's about the ninety-five percent that are in compliance. So we get a few that sometimes are not. So this is the funds to do that.
Any questions for the chief? Can I get a motion to approve? Councilmember Gordon Young?
I move to approve.
I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Vespa? Please cast your ballots. This is item A. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Gordon Young?
I move to approve item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Vespa? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash three fifty-two is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to adopt an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied to pay principal and interest on general obligation corporate purpose bonds of the City of Peoria, Peoria County, Illinois. Twenty fifteen series B, C, and D, twenty sixteen series C, twenty eighteen series A, twenty twenty series A and B, twenty twenty one series A, B, and C, twenty twenty two series A, and twenty twenty three series A, and the partial abatement of taxes levied to pay principal and interest on twenty eighteen series B general obligation bonds in the amount of $552,438. The partial abatement of taxes levied to pay principal and interest on twenty nineteen general obligation bonds in the amount of $500,000. And the partial abatement of taxes levied to pay principal and interest on twenty twenty two series general obligation bonds in the amount of $378,000.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn the floor over to our Finance Director, Director Crady.
Director Crady?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The ordinance in front of you tonight is to abate the levies associated with the city's existing debt issuances minus $2 million. So if you remember during the budget discussions, the city puts aside $2 million for road improvements throughout the city. This abatement ordinance, as you see, abates most of the levies and then portions of some of those levies to get us to that $2 million number. And with that, I'm available if there's any questions associated with that.
Questions? Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Rigganbach. Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash three fifty-three is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to adopt an ordinance levying the taxes for fiscal year 2025 for municipal purposes for the City of Peoria, Illinois.
Director Crady?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In front of you tonight is the levy ordinance that has been discussed with council on October the fifteenth, when we provide the levy estimate as well as the public hearing for the Truth in Taxation that occurred on October the twenty ninth. The levy in front of council tonight has, sets the rate for the city taxes at 1.5550. That is a slight decrease from 1.5551 year over year for the overall levy. The overall levy amount sits at $32 million at $299,015. And with that, I'm available if council has any questions about the levy.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Crady, can you explain in layman terms to the public? How can the tax levy decrease, but yet the Allen household got a letter in the mail saying their mortgage is going up?
So when you, these conversations come up, when what we look at is the dollar amount of the tax extension is going up, which is equal to the growth in assessed value. So what that can mean is your property may have gone up in value. There may be other additional properties in the community that are seeing growth. And so there is the possibility, yes, that if you saw value growth in your property, And so there is the possibility, yes, that if you saw value growth in your property, your, your tax bill may go up based off that growth value. But really, that's what this levy captures. It really keeps what the council has looked at doing over the, over history of maintaining that rate, but really making sure that we're capturing the increase in value in the community.
I'm still going to be on the couch, but thank you for explaining that, Director Craddy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it, you hit the nail on the head, Director, when you said that our rate is staying steady and actually decreasing slightly. I think it's also important that we just remind people that the city's portion of the property tax bill they get in the mail is just a little over eleven percent. The bulk of it goes to schools, to the airport authority, to the sanitary district. Illinois, as we all know, has more levels of government than any state in the union. But it's really important that those, the decisions we make around this horseshoe affect eleven percent of your property taxes, and the property tax rate is staying the same. If you're getting an increase, that probably means your property value is going up, which is also a good thing, something we've been striving for. So with that, I move for the approval.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Continued discussion. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, I must say, I'm a little confused. If we add together the city's rate and account, and the library rate, we come out to one point five-five-five-one. And, um, it's just, and it's, but down at impact, if approved, we're at one point three-five-nine-oh. And the difference being point one-nine-six-one. I'm sure all these numbers are right, but I don't under, I don't understand the difference between those two.
So there are two rates that we have that are not necessarily a variable rate. Those, those look at the debt issuances that we currently have for the library, as well as the debt issuances that we have for the city. When the number you see at the bottom, from a truth in taxation standpoint, from a standpoint of what our legal requirements were for filing notices and hearing notices, it extracts those two pieces, those two levy amounts. And that's where the one point three-five-nine-zero amount comes into, into the play here. What we're seeing is, and we had this discussion with council, I think, on the twenty-ninth, is we have some of those debt levies going down, we're maintaining the fact that the rate is staying stable or slightly lower, and the additional dollars we're putting towards pension obligations. So that's really where that difference is, is it's the two amounts associated with the debt that we have, as well as the library has.
Thank you. So it, I, I guess one of the things we could say is that operations are, are in both numbers. The thing that is not in both numbers is the debt service we're not going to be obligated for, for the coming year.
Correct. Because if, in essence, if we don't abate the levies, they automatically get levied. So you, those usually get taken out because it's not necessarily that we're doing something in the affirmative when it comes to debt levies, you're doing something in the negative.
To councilmen, to put it another way, in the motion you just approved, you approved the nineteen cents for debt service payments. That, that's the two million that we talked about that is going to pay for roads, plus the library debt. Now you're voting on the rest of the levy.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Director Craddy, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Craddy. One question, sir, is a, what is the, I hope you can explain this, what would be the relationship between home improvement and the EAV?
So traditionally, if you do home improvements, you will see an increase in your assessed value. It's not always necessarily going to be the case. I will admit, I'm not the town supervisor who's probably the better person to, to answer that question in terms of the timing of that. The other times that you usually will see an increase in your assessed value is a time of purchase. So if you sell a property and, and your market value on that property has gone up, usually you're going to see an appreciation of your, of your assessed value equal to that market value increase.
So would that be a fair statement to say that as we try to help all our citizens in Peoria and all these grants that were talked about earlier tonight in six-one-six-oh-five example, will these people see an increase in their real estate taxes by matching funds for improvement on their homes?
Eventually in the process, probably, yes.
Okay. So that's why I was trying to have discussion a couple of weeks ago. If you understand these numbers, I was trying to get a freeze from my colleague on the, on the levy, and it was defeated, but I will vote no on this motion tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, is there ever any discussion between all of the other taxing bodies about a forecast of collectively freezing their taxi, tax levies at the same time? Or am I just being maybe a little too optimistic?
No, there's not any discussion about that.
No, appreciate the transparency, and I think that that's something, and Councilman Regenbach explained it well, about all of the different taxing bodies that, that are levering tax levies, and, and I think that if we had more of a cohesive discussion around that, then maybe collaboratively, we could talk about what does a, a community tax levy freeze look like? So that way, one taxing body isn't freezing theirs, but impacting how they provide core services because they're the only taxing levying body that is freezing theirs versus the others. So again, maybe that's just me being too optimistic or something, we can look into the future, but I would love for us to at least have that conversation that we look at collectively, maybe freezing our tax levy to provide some collective relief to our citizens. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve Item twenty-four-three-fifty-three. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with three nays. Velpula, Kelly, Seer.
Twenty-four dash three-five-four is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to approve a resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-five revised budget for the City of Peoria. And this item requires a majority vote of the council members voting, but no less than six votes.
Director Craddy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the culmination of the process that started on October the eighth, when we put the budget on the table for council's consideration. Throughout that process, council made three motions that amended the budget as presented. The net effect from that presentation, it was actually a decrease of seventy-six thousand dollars in expenditures. So in your packet is the resolution for the approval of the budget that's been laid out. Just kind of for the record, the budget has, budgeted revenue is a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-five million, fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. It has expenditures of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight million, seventy-six thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. That has a net use of fund balance a little bit over thirteen million. Those uses are primarily for the general fund for police and fire pension obligations. It's for stormwater use, or stormwater fees, or stormwater fund balance use for capital projects, as well as operations, as well as some of our capital projects. And with that, I'm available if council has any questions.
Councilmember Regenbach?
I would move for the approval as outlined.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Questions, comments? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, just a couple of questions. Can you, for the sake of understanding the budget that we're doing right now, our budget are always biannual budgets, right? We do a budget for two years, but explain throughout the difference, because I, for some, from, because of some of the questions I received, seems to me like some of my colleagues and some of the people out there don't understand why we're doing revision on an annual basis. Can you explain that for everybody, please?
Absolutely. Every two years, the City of Peoria goes through a biannual budget process. That process lays out the spending, the anticipated spending plan for the next two years. But the reality is, from a, a legal standpoint in the state of Illinois, we cannot pass a two-year budget. So we do, the second year is revised, obviously taking into consideration any factors that may have changed, anything, any new grant dollars, new capital projects. But really, we have to do this revised budget within this format because we have to have the legal authority for the appropriation of those funds on an annual basis.
Thank you very much for the explanation. Second question or comment? Every year, there's a, and I've made the case before, we have amendments like we did tonight, and I ask you to research this a little bit this afternoon. Thank you very much for doing it. Can you tell us a little bit of how many amendments we had this year?
So we had, we, so far to date, have had twenty-one budget.
Twenty-one, so which means this budget that we're doing, to me, reminds me of financial, financial plan that is only as good as the day we deliver the budget. It would be, would that be a good statement to make about the budget also, sir?
I would say yes, as I, in multiple places in my career, I, I've had requests to amend the budget on January second. It's just things come up that you didn't necessarily anticipate when you're going through that process.
So this year, we almost averaged like two changes per month. So it is a flexible document. I just want to make sure people understand that, depend on the, the grants we receive and all that. So we're going to vote for a budget pretty soon, but it's not, it's not really what I would call the final budget, because we will have, hopefully, a lot of grant money coming in next year also, and we'll have, we'll be called to do a lot of amendments to our budget. And so it's a very flexible document. So I just want to make sure my colleagues and the public how they understand the process with this budget. Thank you very much for those great explanation tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good questions, good points. Thank you, Councilman Seer. Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things I just wanted to provide some clarity, if you can help me here, Director Craddy or Mr. Manager. When it comes to us holding our truth in taxation hearing, can you speak to how we are required to hold that annually?
Yeah, so this, this year, we had two filing legal requirements. So we had the truth in taxation hearing, which occurred on the twenty-ninth, and that was for the levy that, that council just approved. So that triggers when you have an extension, your levy, your levy extension increases more than five percent on your operations. As we laid out during that conversation, the increase is around seven-point-eight percent. So that was triggered by really the increase in that levy. The other public hearing that we do have on an annual basis as part of this process is we do have a public hearing on the budget, really to give the community an opportunity to provide any input they may have to the council on the budget and what was in the budget or any requests that they may have.
And so the truth in taxation hearing was already on the schedule, correct?
Correct.
So I just wanted to put that out there because I received some inquiries regarding our recent acquirement of the PNC building, and those two were separate. The truth in taxation was already set. The PNC purchase was completely a separate purchase out of our general fund. And so I just wanted to put that out there, that the two had no correlation with each other, just for that could be out there on the public.
And I would say the other major distinction is that PNC building, going back to Councilman Seer's point, that was a budget amendment that the council made as part of this fiscal year. It did not necess, it did not have an impact in terms of what the budget and the levy laid forward to council for twenty-five was.
No, thank you for providing that, and I know it can be somewhat confusing, so I'm glad that we were able to, to clear that up. Thank you for your work. Thank you to all the department heads, to my colleagues around the horseshoe of helping us get to this point in the budget, and I look forward to supporting it this evening. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy and, and Mr. Manager, I, I have some problems with the budget. I have problems with the budget every year, and I, I guess everybody probably has a problem here and there with the budget. But I would once again like to say that the budget book that we are, with which we're provided, is, in, in my opinion, superb. It's very easy to get into that budget book and find out where we're going, and I don't know about where we're going, but find out where we are and where we think we're going. And I, I would, I would just like to compliment you. Again, this wasn't always the case. Director Craddy, when you showed up, I must say, things got much clearer coming out of your department. And, and so I, I really want to compliment you, and I, that, that's about it. But it, it is, it isn't, it's not easy, but it, it's clear to follow that budget book. My, my, my congratulations. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Seeing no more comments or questions, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Craddy. City manager. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash three fifty-five is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to receive and file the month ended September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four unaudited financial report.
Director Craddy?
I promise this is the last time tonight. We just talked about looking forward. We're going to look retrospectively here where we are through the month of, the end of September of this year. Just a couple of key, key highlights, general fund revenues are down about three-point-three percent o, over budget. We also have expenditures down about three percent in the general fund. So I think really the key takeaway for council within this report is this is still in line with the projections we just laid out and the budget that was approved by council. So we still are on pace to, to be right around budget this year by when the year, when we reach year end. And with that, I'm available if there's any questions on the month-end financial report.
Any questions? Get a motion? Move by Councilmember Seer to approve, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes to receive and file. Madam Clerk?
We are at presentations. Twenty-four dash three fifty-six is a communication from the city manager and director of Public Works with a request to receive and file a presentation on snow removal operations.
Mr. Manager, do you have to talk about snow?
Um, yes, it's that time of year again. We have to talk about snow, and with this, we have our, our Public Works Director, Rick Powers, who's here to give you a quick presentation.
Director Powers?
Well, first of all, thank you for passing the budget. We contained therein our significant enhancements to our ability in Public Works to do our job to change it. If you read my narrative, you will see that. So thank you. And it's a hard act to follow, but I'm not going to talk about mowing, I'm going to talk about snowing. So even though we're still mowing the grass, it is going to snow. Where I grew up, they got forty inches here recently in Colorado, so I'm glad I'm not there, but I know about snow. My job before I came here was at Tippa Lake, Michigan, in thirteen counties. I know about snow. The chief snow fighter in charge is in Arizona, relaxing. No, he's actually at a conference, Si Maroon, our deputy director, so I'll be filling in for him because he loves doing this, as you know. He is very good at what he does. The department is very good at what they do, and the operations division is phenomenal. In fact, they won the last statewide snow rodeo and had the top plower. He's no longer with us. He, he went off to greener pastures for himself, and best of luck to him, but he was, again, he actually won it all. So just rest assured, you're in good hands in winter weather with the Department of Public Works. They take it very seriously. We take it very seriously, and Si Maroon is, there's none better. And I wish he was here, quite frankly, to do this because I know he enjoys it, but he also is probably enjoying Arizona. So with that, I got to pull a clicker out. I forgot it was in my pocket. And proceed to go through this. I'll move quickly because we've been here a while. So basically, throughout the city of Peoria, you have twenty-one snow routes. Each of those routes is approximately about five miles long. You have four designated hill routes, which includes about eighteen roads that go downhill or in the bluff area toward the river. Tandem plow routes are road, roads where you see four lanes and/or we have two plows, plowing in tandem. We go into twenty-four hour operations, or when we have two or more inches of snow, an A and B shift, and we go until we have the roads cleared. This is how we go about, or the priorities clearing. See, I'm moving fast, Manager. Look at this, look at me go. He gave me ten minutes, just so everybody knows. There's an over-under on this. This is our- This is our priorities, or how we go about movement. Our primary routes, the main routes where people are using to go to work daily, high arterial routes where there's schools, hospitals, those areas, those will be our priorities. The secondary routes are the residential areas. The lane miles you, excuse me, the mileage you see are actually centerline miles. So which is, I don't know why we always use centerline, because you should really divide that by two, a centerline meaning the center of a road. There are two lanes, so double that. That's what we are actually plowing in the city. So when you see the primary routes are going, we, the priority will be those primary routes where you see people commuting, getting back and forth around hospitals and so on. After those routes are cleared, we go into the residential areas or your neighborhoods and begin clearing those streets. What happens during snow events, when you have two or more inches of snow in residential areas, you pack it. And that's when we start getting the complaints, because we're on the arterials clearing snow, and you're driving out of your neighborhoods onto the arterials. And when you get there, by the time we get into the neighborhoods, the snow is packed on the residential streets. So invariably, we end up treating more than plowing when we get to the residential areas, meaning we put down salt. But that is our priority. Again, we do not have a bare pavement policy, which is nearly impossible in the Midwest anyway. We make the roads drivable and as safe as plausible. That is the idea. We always want the driver to be the most important person involved in snow fighting. When you're behind the wheel, you're responsible for the vehicle and the people around you. We do our best. When you get beyond that, and I just have to mention it because it's not in here, when you hear ice, I'm just gonna say it because I have to say it, because it happens at least once a year in the Midwest, and I've been around it too much. The best thing you can do in an ice storm is stay off the ice. That includes us. If you've ever seen a fully loaded snow plow, I mean with salt, on ice, it does the same thing you do. It slides off the road. It's dangerous for us, it's dangerous for you. So when you hear ice, stay home. Call the boss, call the school, call whoever and say, no, can't do it, just don't do it. It's just not safe. Let us go out there, take our time, work through it, and get chemicals on it, and let the sun do its job. Ice is dangerous. Stay off of it. That's the best advice probably I could give you tonight. That is our priority slide for what we are doing. Again, it is a public safety operation. Our goal is to maintain safe travel, and that's what we want to do. This is our timing. So when we get between two and six inches, we try to clear the roads within 24 hours. When we exceed six inches, we try to get them cleared within 36 hours. The neighborhoods or the residential streets, we go on to an ABC sub route. And this, that map you just saw, is all of those routes. This route explains them and how operations runs through those routes, so that no one gets any preferential treatment in any specific area. A lot of people may believe they do, they do not. So what you have is a breakdown of the city where I showed you all 21 routes. There are sub routes that are ABC. We start a season by going to Area A, which would be marked A within a driver's book. They would clear Area A, then move to B, then to C. The next storm, so that we don't have any preferential treatment, we would start with B, then C, then A. Then the next storm, C, then A, then B, and then just continue to rotate throughout the winter in that fashion, so that no one gets any preferential treatment on residential street clearing. That's how it works, I promise you. No one is getting preferential treatment. How does this work for you when you see these signs? You see them year-round, but when it snows, these are no parking signs. Stay off of the roads and don't park in these areas when you have two or more inches of snow. In a type-one event, that means we have two or more inches, and you're on a primary snow route. When you see these signs, do not park there, because we're trying to plow, meaning we're gonna plow around your car, we're gonna plow snow up against your car, or you could even be sighted, depending on where the car is parked or what kind of severity, what I guess we're trying to do or accomplish if it's blocking something. If we have a snow emergency, which we had a few years ago, which is citywide, the City Manager, Mayor, or someone in, myself, I think even, is in that group, can declare a citywide snow emergency, where say, we have a storm of significant amounts where we busted out, we're like trucking snow out of downtown, which we have done. When that happens, and we declare that emergency, we can actually tow your vehicle in an emergency cell, because again, it is an emergency, we need to get the routes open. We are just gonna move your vehicle, take it, that's what we will do, and we will impound it, and then we'll let you know where it's at, or we just have to contact us, and that's how it goes. But that does not happen that often. It hasn't happened, well, it's happened once since I've been here. One snow emergency in five years that we've declared, so not bad. We've had some pretty mild winters. I hope it stays that way. All right, getting there? Am I under 10? I hope. I think he's got a stopwatch on me. So this is how you get ahold of us when you need help, and you're in any type of snow event. If you want to report anything or any anomaly around your area or a street, or there's something, or you think we've missed a route, whatever the case might be, any type of assistance you need, these are your ways to contact us citywide. So we have our communication group. We'll be sending out things in advance, letting you know what we plan. We'll be, you'll see us on the news, you'll see Cy on the news, you'll see our communication director, Nick. You may even see Stacy if it's an emergency, because again, these can rise to some pretty bad events. So that being said, you will see us talking proactively. You'll see us in a reactive mode by contacting us via Facebook or on Facebook, the citywide webpage, Peoria Cares, which by the way, Peoria Cares, I want you to use all the time, because believe it or not, that's a metric tool for us, because you get a number when you call Peoria Cares, and that holds us accountable. Some people don't realize that, but you actually will get better service from Public Works if you call Peoria Cares, because there's a timeline from when you call to us getting a service request to include you as counselors, just my preference, because again, we build metrics from that. But that's also very key in the wintertime. So we can also use billboards, primarily in that area, when we have emergencies or something along those lines. We do have agreements that we can use billboards. Then finally, we open our Snow Operations Center for Snow Fighting, and those are the contact numbers where you can get ahold of us if you need to call us directly. Again, if it is someone who needs help, we are trying to help the police, fire, remember that, getting to areas they need to. They don't have plows in front of their vehicles, and they need us first to sometimes plow into areas where they need to go, depending on the amount of snow that's going there or that's going on during that event. I was moving so fast that I actually finished. Look at that, under, I think, like eight minutes. We are going to do what we always do. We appreciate your support, and again, thank you for passing the budget. The department is doing well. We are ready, the vehicles are ready, our people are ready, and we appreciate the council's support. And up at Cy Maroon's watching so high, Cy, because he can't help himself. Thank you very much, Counselor. I'll stand by for any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation, Director Powers. Let me ask this. The plan looks very similar to last year. Are there any changes from last year's plan to this year's plan?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt. It is identical to last year. I will say this, with this year's budget, if you read the presentation, my narrative, we converted the temporary employees that we normally would hire for winter only and then would let them go at the end of winter. Those are all now full-time equivalents, so it looks like our headcount grew. So with that year-round service and what we believe we may be able to do, we are contemplating adding snow routes.
That's great. And then do you have new equipment this year that you didn't have last year?
We are getting some. Some of our plows, plows again are a very expensive piece of equipment. We have about 30 now, 29, I believe, plows, and I believe eight smaller, what we call work trucks. Again, we have 21 routes that we are, you know, basically, we have equipment for 30. And again, we'd have to keep all 30 going, so again, if we increase the routes, there comes a point where the complement of the fleet would have to increase as well. That's where it becomes an expensive proposition. A snow plow is a very expensive piece of equipment. But we do, we do have equipment, we are replacing it. I believe we have two in the CIP this year, two or three. I'd have to go get my budget book to look, but I believe there are two. So we are replacing our fleet, we're doing well, we are being good stewards of taxpayers' dollars, and we know you trust us, and we truly appreciate it. So thank you, Mayor, for asking that question.
Yes, and my last question is, do you expect a snowier winter this year?
If I could do that, I wouldn't, I think I'd just retire. If I could predict snow, because I'd call everybody and say, give me money for telling you it was gonna snow. We have had, since I've been here, unbelievably mild winters for the Midwest, in my opinion. And except one year, we had an ice storm that was really an anomaly, and it snowed on top of that ice, you probably remember about three years ago. And that event was probably the most prominent that I recall being here in five years. It has been easy for us. Now, keep in mind, I came from the tip of Lake Michigan in 13 counties. It's snowing there now. I used to go to like a support group and saying it's snowing in La Porte, because it's just snowing all the time. It's snowed, I think, two or three times, just lake effect. So compared to those areas, it has been very, very, very easy on us. I can't say, the Midwest is an unpredictable place when it comes to snow.
Okay. All right.
But thanks for putting me on the spot, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Powers. Every year, I ask the same two questions, and I will ask them again this year. You talk about the clock, 24 hours, 36 hours. Can you tell all our constituents when the clock starts?
When the snow stops.
Very important. Can you say that again, please?
When the snow, when the snow event stops, the clock starts. That's a very good question, Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I like it when I ask a question. Second question about, tell us about the upgrades on the technology. I ask that question every year. Do we have GPS on the trucks? Do we have ways to contact our drivers and say, hey, you missed a route, or you missed something, or where are we? We get a lot of phone calls, when's my road gonna be cleared? I mean, I know in the past, we did not have the technology on the trucks. Do we have it now?
We do not, but we are, we actually have scored the RFP for our asset management system, which is gonna be a very comprehensive asset management system. And that does have some routing capabilities. Well, we would hope, we're gonna be having four vendors coming to do presentations for us. Part of that is an operational or operations side or a work order side of what we could do that could incorporate that. Today, we do not have GPS in our plows.
Do we know how expensive that is?
We, no, we will after we see these presentations. Now, I've been involved, again, telematics, I'll try not to belabor this too much, is something that I don't know that from the city perspective, we need to go that deep into, to the point of, you can get real deep with plows and say, when the blade is up, when it's down, how much salt we're putting out. In a city the size of Peoria, I don't know that we need to get that deep. We could buy GoPros and put them on the dash and feed the feed to the web, and that would probably satisfy most people in Peoria, just to see, hey, look, the truck is on this road at this time. That's what we're looking for, is something that just speaks to the public. As far as getting a driver to a route that's missed, the second part of your question, that's simply contacting us, letting us know that you believe the route's been missed, and we communicate with the driver and you to let you know where we are in the fight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. You wanna make a motion to receive and file?
Move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any additional discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Powers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Twenty-four dash two eighty-one is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff for the following. A, approve a resolution approving an annexation agreement for property located at 9910 North Orange Prairie Road and North Illinois Route 91. And that, this item requires a two-thirds vote of corporate authorities, eight votes. Item B, adopt an ordinance annexing property located at North Illinois Route 91. Item C, adopt an ordinance rezoning property to a Class C-1 general commercial district located at North Illinois Route 91, and, excuse me, and rezoning property from a Class R-3 single-family residential district to a Class C-1 general commercial district located at 9910 North Orange Prairie Road. And item D, adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C-1 general commercial district for outdoor recreation for property located at North Illinois Route 91 and for the property located at 9910 North Orange Prairie Road. And we need separate votes on each, please, and also on your desks. There are handouts from the Community Development Center in yellow, and there is a map from Councilmember Allen as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I may wanna let Councilman Allen talk about this at this point in time, since it's been deferred, and turn it over to the councilman, if that's okay.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Definitely appreciate everyone's patience as we have deferred this item to work with the stakeholders that are involved, both the developers and the residents in the area. We had some productive stakeholder meetings, too. In fact, here at City Hall, appreciate everyone who attended those, appreciate everyone for their respectful comments and, you know, suggestions and feedback, and that's kinda how we got to where we are today. Assistant Director Allison, I appreciate your effort in this. It seems like you and I have been talking every other day on this matter, but this is a very important matter. Can you begin with an overview of how we have arrived to this point, including a reflection of how this project was previously approved? Its special permit did expire, now they're back again, and then the differences maybe between the original project and in the current project that's in front of us?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'll start with the history. In 2017, Mr. Mark Larson petitioned successfully to annex nine acres of land, rezone about five acres of that land to commercial. The four acres remaining remained as residential, and then also obtained a special use for an outdoor recreation amusement development. So that was in 2017. Choices by Mr. Mark Larson, for whatever reason, that development was not constructed. A special use has, has to be established within two years of approval. So by 2019, the property remains annexed, but the special use approval expired. Okay. So fast forward to about a month ago, before you was the proposal, again, from Mr. Mark Larson, petitioning to annex an additional four and a half acres to be incorporated with the original nine acres. So now we have a total development project of about 13 and a half acres. An annexation agreement is a part of this that would encompass the 13 and a half acres, rezoning all of it to C-1 general commercial, and then the fourth component is that request for a special use for this, for the outdoor recreation. So same proposal, a little bit more land, same site, so to speak, a little bit different footprint. Speaking to the differences, in 2017, the amusement development included go-kart track, mini-golf, batting cages, some other similar uses. Today, the development includes go-karts, mini-golf, no batting cages. The, the development allows for a Track One and the option for a Track Two, all just for In, as Councilman Allen mentioned, some great conversations have happened in the last 30 days with neighbors to really understand the concerns, address the concerns as much as possible. When we met with the developer and the neighbors, the primary concerns were noise and lighting and just how the development will impact the neighbor, the neighborhood of this area. The result, which is, is a part of the reason for the yellow paper that you have with some revisions to the annexation agreement, that also coincide with same revisions with the special use conditions. The go-kart facility originally was just your traditional go-kart, and now the revision is proposed that the go-karts will be entirely electric, electric-only go-karts allowed on the site. The other revision is that no more than 12 go-karts may operate on each track at a given time. So there is the potential for two tracks, Track One, and then potential expansion for Track Two. Both tracks are limited to 12 go-karts, electric only, operating at any given time. Lighting, the... Okay. Lighting, the agreement, annexation agreement and the special use, both have a provision that limit the height of the light poles to no more than thirty feet. There's also provision in the special use ordinance that says the operations must cease by ten PM. Aside from security lighting, the rest of the lighting for this facility must be shut off within an hour after closing. And that's allowing, you know, persons to clean up, close the facility, lights will shut down. Some security lighting is, is in consideration to remain. I think that's about all I wanted to outline as far as changes. Do you have any questions that I can answer for you?
Great synopsis. I truly appreciate that. I'm sure we will have some questions for you, so I wouldn't move too far. But Mayor, if it's okay, would I, can I give the privilege of the floor to some constituents in the-
Yes, so there were five individuals, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I would ask, with no objections, that their comments be limited to about three minutes.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to call each individual up, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council tonight. I'd like to begin with Nate Miller.
Cut my remarks down if we only have three minutes here, but Nathan Miller is my name. Our daughter and her husband, who are here, and their family live on Route ninety-one, about two-tenths of a mile from this project. I'm here on their behalf, not really as an attorney, but as a father, and I first was going to be up here expressing opposition, a strong opposition to this whole project, but I've changed my tune a little bit, and I commend the Larsons, Councilman Allen, Mayor Ali, and Leah Allison for working with us on this project and trying to listen through and get the parties together to try and reach some kind of an agreement. The Councilman Allen had arranged several meetings of the neighbors and the Larsons, and the Larsons have agreed to some concessions to address some of the concerns that the neighbors have with respect to this project. And Mayor Ali and Leah Allison have participated, and their input has been appreciated throughout this whole process. But having said that, I can't sit here and say that we fully support the project. Yes, there've been some concessions. The electric go-karts were a big concession, and we certainly appreciate that. But we still have a number of concerns, and if we had our, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have the go-karts at all. We wouldn't have the miniature golf course. We wouldn't have this project in this area because of the effect that it has on the nearby neighbors. In your packets, and I hope you've all seen that, we have outlined what we feel are potential issues with traffic, safety, security, land values, lighting, and future development in that area, both commercial and residential development in that area next to a go-kart track and a miniature golf course. So I'm not going to rehash all of those, but there's a couple things that I do want to just point out. One, Leah Allison was talking about the history of this. Recognize when it was approved seven years ago, it was one-third the size of this project that's now being proposed. So it's not just the same project that's being brought up and, and trying to be approved this time. The lighting, one of the concerns we had with lighting, they've limited the height to no more than thirty, but we would also like some kind of restriction that the, that the lighting be downlighting and targeted lighting rather than lighting that's going to be spreading out and affecting these neighbors on surrounding and adjoining properties. Another item is the annexation agreement and the special use talks about section fifteen sixty-eight of, of the city code and decibels of, what, eighty-five decibels at fi- at fifty feet. If you look at that section of the code, it's really dealing with motor vehicles, so I don't know how applicable it is here. But if it's being incorporated in here, the way it's written in the annexation agreement, it says fifty feet from the property line, that the, the decibel level has to be down to eighty-five feet. We feel that that ordinance, the way it's written, applies to fifty feet from the source of the sound, which would be the go-karts, or music, or other activities that are being performed at this, at this project. So I think there needs to be an adjustment to the language to make that agreement consistent with the city's ordinance here. It's, it's really a source-driven ordinance rather than a property line. So again, trying to be brief here, I just, I urge you to consider all of the concerns that have been raised in the objection that I submitted and others have submitted in, in opposition to this project, but it's your decision, obviously. And if you decide that it's still something that, that can pass with these additional restrictions and concern, items that I've mentioned here tonight, and I think others may mention also, I actually, I wish the Larsons best of luck and, and hope the project is a success if they are allowed to go. One last-
Thank you quickly, because you're over five minutes. I know you're an attorney.
I know. One last, one last item, if there could be a show of hands of people here that are objecting to the project, if you could raise your hands. So we've got a number of them, and, and again, in your packet, you saw numerous signatures from people that were in, opposing the project, too. Thank you for your consideration.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next up, Dan Helich.
Evening. Thank you. My name is Dan Helig. I live on Route ninety-one, and we are about a quarter of a mile from this development. And so I, too, just thank Councilman Allen and Mayor Ali and Director Allison for all their support and the Larsons. We had some hard conversations. We had some good conversations. It was a very collaborative effort, and so I say thank you for that. I have two concerns that I'd just like to address, and Nate touched on a little bit of it, the safety and security being one of those concerns. We all know we live in a time and place where unfortunately, youth-oriented events and places of business have come under attack, have had violence breakouts, landmark, round one, those type of places we've seen where there has been issues with, when youth are gathered. Alls we're asking for is a security, safety, crowd control-type plan. Mr. Larson asked me, why would I be concerned? I'm a quarter of a mile away from this. Do I really think that youth, that teenagers are going to march through a farm field and do something to our property? I took that very personally. Our teenage daughter was at Northwoods Mall the night that first big riot happened with round one, when it spilled out into the mall, and the police were called in to take control. She and her girlfriend and the mother that was with them were escorted to the back of the store they were in, and they were locked into the back room of that store. She had no cell phone coverage. She couldn't call us. She was, you know, she was about fourteen at the time, so she was very scared. I say that to Mr. Larson because Northwoods merchants had a plan, at least. They had a protocol. They knew if there was an incident, what to do if there was a riot or an active shooter. They had a plan, what, how to protect their staff and to protect their, their guests that were there. We have not seen a plan of how they're going to control crowds, and that's part of what we're asking for, because safety and security is important to us. We just had a young man shot half a mile from our home. Our home looks at the apartments where that young man lost his life, what, last week or so. When teenagers were breaking into cars, he went out to see what was going on, and he got shot. So yes, that is a concern to us. Second concern is just the fluidity of this project. It started off with ten to twelve go-karts, and then a small track that was going to house three-to-five-year-old type go-karts, pretty small go-karts. That was at the first meeting. We asked them to look at the electric. They did look at electric vehicles. They came back at the second meeting, and it was going to be ten go-karts and a small go-kart track, but no electric vehicles. They said it wasn't feasible from a cost perspective, from recharging perspective, and they couldn't get wet. If it started to rain, there was a high probability the carts would be ruined. So that was just two weeks ago, that there was, those were out. Councilman Allen sent us an email Friday night that they had changed their mind, and they found a supplier, and they're going to go to electric go-karts. This afternoon, we got one that says they're going to have two tracks now with twenty-four electric go-karts. We're trusting the Larsons that these go-karts will be like electric vehicles. They'll be very quiet, kind of creepy when they come up on you, right? You don't even hear them. That's what we're hoping, but we don't have a guarantee. So alls we're asking is, with this special use, you put in some tight restrictions that protect our properties, our families that are out here. Councilman Regenbach, I agree with you. We all want our property values to go up. We, as homeowners, do. You, as the city, do. That drives greater revenue. We all fear that our property values will go down with us. I ask you to search your own self. Would you want to live next to Big Dog Speedway, a racetrack, a go-kart track? Would you want to be a quarter of a mile, or Zimmerman, or even less than that? Would you want that in your neighborhood, and what would that do to your property values? We all believe it will go down. We believe this will impede development in this area, because not too many medical offices are going to want to build next to a racetrack, a go-kart track. And so we're just asking you to put everything you can into the special, the special use and restrict to make sure this is a quality development and is run in a quality way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Kevin Hearn?
Madam Mayor and the council, I'm the closest homeowner to this facility that we're talking about tonight, and I certainly don't see the, why the resistance for this type of facility. Of course, it's another venture, another place for children to have fun and, you know, get together. I'm confident that there'd be security and everything there. I'm a landscaping contractor for the city of Peoria, and I mow Orange Prairie. I'm very familiar with all the businesses there. And especially on the weekend, the Louisville Slugger, there's thousands of people coming in there. There's cheering. There's games going on. You know, I mow those medians on Orange Prairie, Charter Oak and several others. I just don't see how this facility is going to create so much noise. I'm a landscaper. I have a brush chipper. I have ten zero-turn mowers that I use to take care of city facilities. Right next to this, I have skid steers on my property. So I don't see how electric go-karts, and I'm sure all of you have heard of brush chipper before, I do maintenance on it. I start it and use it to help take care of city facilities, things that Simon Maroon gives me instruction to do. So as I'm listening here, I'm not understanding that road has several businesses, including mine, and I'm the closest to it. Again, you know, when I'm mowing, especially, and I'm not picking on Louisville Slugger, I'm perfectly fine with that, young people playing baseball, softball, whatever it is they do, but a lot of times I have to pause because of the traffic that's going through there. I mean, a lot of traffic. Now, of course, we've got the Hy-Vee and all that right there. But I'm to the north of where this facility would be, basically in my backyard, several hundred feet. And of course, I'm okay with it. It's not going to disturb me and my wife. Our children are grown and married and have their own homes, and I'm gone during the day with my men that work with me to make a living. But as far as noise, you know, I'm, I'm making quite a bit of noise. So that's, any questions, or?
Thank you.
Okay.
Diane Larson?
Hello. Greetings to Madam Mayor and the councilmen. I'm just going to go over what we see as our journey here, and then Mark's going to answer some questions. So we're looking to build a place that would be safe and enjoyable for our community in Peoria to come together. We will offer a place that, for the togetherness, is ice cream. We want to do light food, birthday parties, and of course, putt-putt and go-karts. We are planning on one track, and we have said that we will do, the one track will be twelve carts. I did put a second track in there. I did not specify what it would be. We thought we would leave it for years to come, or if we're doing really well. No, we did not say we were going to put another twelve on that. That was, again, words that were just kind of, I think, because we've opened it up. I personally saw a little kid's cart, and I've said that in the past meeting. But I don't want to be held to that, because it is looking at in the future. Our community place was designed by Farnsworth Architecture. They worked with us all along. We did have this years ago in place, and COVID hit, unfortunately, and it set us back. With that, we also had some other things that went on personally, and we thought we should wait until we could get it. And then we did acquire a little bit of land, and Mark will go through that as well. Our community place will be compromised, a beautiful place to sit. I want pods of where families can come together, our kids can come together. The one thing that I've always envisioned, we have five children with us, and we always see them. They're always on their phones. We want to go back to what the community is. The community is done-lap kids coming down and spending the day, you know, sitting in a pod and having conversations. Our idea is that grandparents are going to come and, for ice cream, and sit and have a community. They're going to see their neighbors there. They're going to come together as a community. And that is our, been our vision all along. We look at to be a safe place, and yes, to join together. Are we going to have to figure this out as we go? A hundred percent. I'm reeling, and I'm up for the challenge. And I so appreciate, a lot of the meeting, they come to us, and they were like, did you think of this? You know what? I'm going to listen, and I'm going to learn. And we are thinking about all these different things that we are going to have to see with the safety and of our community. But I personally believe that if we can get our kids engaging and talking and speaking together, again, we're going to start having a community that we can trust as well. We are going to have problems, but let us figure that out as we go. We are looking to get Peoria just another needed place for community to come together and, and to spend that quality time together. And I hope that you appreciate what we're trying to bring to Peoria. Here's-
First of all, I have the utmost respect for all the neighbors. I get it. I mean, you know, the two things that we get scared of is change and the unknown. And we're kind of throwing both at them. The first thing is, the blueprint that we got approved four years ago is identical to what our plans are in our blueprint now. The only change was, we had to have access off of Orange Prairie that had a opening in the boulevard. So we had to buy land to the north that had an opening in the boulevard. And at that time, when we asked to get that part of it annexed into the city, the city recommended us to annex more land. Now, we did want a little bit more to the east because of, we felt our putt-putt was too crowded. So we did ask for a little bit- So we did ask for a little bit to the east, but for the most part, the city recommended us to annex more land into the city. With the map that you have in front of you, every single neighbor is anywhere from a quarter to a half mile. Now, there's some neighbors here that are further than a half mile, and we did not include them. And like I said, there's only one neighbor, 537 feet away, that is closer than a quarter mile away, and that's Kevin. And he's for the project. Going back, you know, four years ago, when we got it approved, it was gas go-karts. And at the, when we talked to the neighbors at that time, I did not think, you know, I talked to two electric go-kart companies, and they recommended that electric go-karts is not feasible to the outside. Well, after the second meeting, I talked to a third company out of Florida, and I, we think we can get the electric go-karts to work. So therefore, far as noise, there, you know, there is none. I mean, it's a quarter mile away, the closest house. And here again, the lights, they're no higher than 30 feet. They're 25 feet with a three-foot pedestal. So the lighting is nothing. And I understand that, you know, they had to deal with big shots golf that would have had the 50-foot lights and would have had major, you know, problems with the neighbors and this and that. But with us having 25-foot lights with a three-foot pedestal, you're not going to be affected a quarter mile away. Yeah. And our hours of operation will be probably April 1st to November 1st, November 15th. I mean, it's going to be nine months out of the year. We'll be open, and this goes coorsides with the school, but when school is closed, we'll be open from probably 11 to 10 o'clock. When school is open, we'll probably be, you know, 4 to 10 and probably 11 to 10 on the And far as the sound decibels, like I said, the electric go-karts are running about 40 to 60 decibels, which at 50 decimals, that's what your refrigerator runs at. So there's not going to be any sound, I mean, especially a quarter mile away. I mean, you know, and that's where I just have to stress that these neighbors are not on top of us or we're not on top of them. It's a quarter to a half mile away on every single neighbor except Kevin, and he's 500 and some feet away. Any questions? And definitely speak up, and Ty's going to be my interpreter.
I would like to ask a question to Mrs. Larson because I heard this statement tonight, and then I heard it at one of our earlier meetings. You said that this would be a place for Dunlap kids to come.
And Peoria children, yes.
Okay. So I just heard the Dunlap kids, but I just want to...
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, the reason I point that out is because unless it's a private club, you know, with membership, if it's open to the public, it will be Peoria kids, it'll be East Peoria kids, it'd be kids from out of town, and so it won't, you know, it won't be restricted to...
It's not restricted, it's just that I happen to, my kids grew up in Dunlap, so I say the word Dunlap, but I did change tonight and said Peoria. I did realize that I did say, and it is open to everybody. We're excited. We're hoping even Sluggers kids can come down in between, you know, the families that are from out of town. They're going to come down and maybe sit in a pod and just come together to talk. That's what we're looking for. It's all children, all people, so.
Can you speak to the security concern that has been expressed by the neighbors, the residents, the homeowners?
I totally understand the security's concern. I have been trying to figure out like how the different things, but I think until I'm sitting in that spot, I'm not going to understand all the different things that are going to come out of it. But they did bring up some good things. I've been talking to some teachers. One of the things that I would love to do, and maybe it's a little naive of me, but I would love to, and I've been looking down this road, is hiring some of our retired people that are in our community or our teachers in the summertime. You know, they have the experience. That's been our goal all along. And I think I mentioned that at the last meeting. I did talk to a policeman that is in town that I am, I know, and he said that, you know, there's a lot of retired policemen that would probably come over and do that if we had to. I'm personally hoping, and maybe it's my optus, you know, that maybe we're not going to have to go down that road, and maybe that we can just start it off very heavily saying that these are our rules. You know, these are our rules. I run 83 people now in my business, and I have very strict rules. Maybe I can keep that. If I can't, then I'm going to learn as I go, and I'm going to take on and ask everybody what I can do for help and reach out, and we're going to make it work.
Yeah. I do have a question for you guys. Is there a crime problem at Louisville Sluggers at all?
What was that question again?
Is there, and actually, that's a great question, is, has there been, and we would not know this as much as all of you, is, has there been a problem at Louisville Sluggers with crime? You know, I'm hoping that maybe we can run the same establishment, maybe we can set those ground rules right off at the beginning and say, this is the way we're going to run this place, and if you don't like it, you're not going to come to our place establishment.
Mr. Manager, can you speak to the crime question?
I don't have any of the data for Louisville Slugger, but what, you know, just a quick glance back at the chief, you know, we're not seeing much in terms of criminal activity at Louisville Slugger at all.
It's a little bit different operation, though, in terms of the public being able to just come in and play baseball or soccer or whatever their offerings are. Councilwoman Gordon Young.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You touched on it regarding security, but before I ask my question, I want to commend all of you for being this invested in terms of your concerns and then just the Larson's trying to provide an opportunity for families to have one additional thing to do. I am concerned about the security aspect, only from the perspective of, when you're talking about this type of operation, it would seem to me that you would want to have security in place anyway and not retirees per se. You want to have qualified police personnel that you could hire or a security company that could come in and man the place or woman the place, if you will. So that's something I think is important to consider. And then with Louisville Slugger, I'm glad that Mr. Hearn brought that up because it is something to think about. What is the, but there is a difference. What is the difference? Are we questioning the type of people that your facility may draw? And I ask that because with Louisville Slugger, you have athletes. You know, baseball and softball is a big deal, and people travel, you know, and they're there for a specific reason versus an entertainment center, which that you're proposing, which I think would be different. And so I do understand the concerns of the residents, but I also believe that based on the proximity, that you do have some things in place that would hopefully curtail some of their concerns. But I do have to say, I think that the security piece, that has to be in place.
And I hear you, and I respect that. I think that, I think right off the bat, if there's a problem, this is my business, you know, I'm going to look at it and go, oh, my gosh, I have a serious issue going on. Of course, I'm not going to just let it... I think that's the part that I'm a little bit confused about is, it's a business that we are creating out of the love of our community and us wanting to share with the community. If we start to have a problem in there, of course, we're going to right away attack. I mean, I've even said to Mark, we're going to have a soft opening to see, kind of not advertised, totally a soft opening, so we can feel what's the different levels of issues that we're going to have. And then the following year, I would be able to start with a hard opening. And at that point, I think if we're seeing any signs of that, I hope that everybody knows I'm going to protect my business because this is my business, and I'm going to jump right on it.
If I may?
Yes.
I would highly encourage you to, I mean, this place of euphoria, like, that's great, but I think from a realistic perspective, that's something that you want to be proactive on.
And I appreciate that, and maybe that's something I need to look at right away. I, like I said, I did reach out to a fellow policeman that I know, and he did say that, you know, that's an extra job a lot of times they like to do. So that might be something that maybe, you know, with your words, I just jump on that a little bit ahead.
Yeah. And here again, we, we're definitely not opposed to even having a security cop there if we have to. I mean, you know, everything is going to be a learning experience. I mean, you know, and of course, we're not looking at it as a violent place with guns and crime and, you know, and like I said, we will learn as we go, and if we need, you know, security officers there, we'll have them there. I mean, you know, I guess I just envisioned something completely different far as, you know, crime and stuff. I look at it as a fun place for families and this and that. And maybe I'm just, you're not naive, and I definitely could be, but I can promise you, as anything that we're seeing that is not up to speed, of course, we're going to change it. We're going to say, hey, we need, you know, more of this, more of that. And like Di mentioned earlier, we're hoping to have a lot of teachers in the summer, one that we feel they can handle kids, they understand kids. But I can promise you, anything that we feel is not being ran like it should, or we feel that, you know, it's a bad hangout for kids or whatever, of course, we're going to enforce and change it, you know.
If I may say one other thing, is if we need to eventually hire, I'm not opposed. I'm a, I want to run the safest place that we can for the community, for, you know, Peoria should be able to have a safe place to come and join together. And if that means that I have to hire a couple of security guys to hang around, you know, and enforce roles, I'm not opposed to that at all. I just don't want to go into it with a vision that I have that kind of place yet. I want to go into it thinking, you know, I want to go into it thinking, oh, my gosh, we're going to have a great place. But again, if anything arises, I'm going to be the first one on it. You know, if we have to close for a week to make sure that our place is safe for our community, we're going to do that, so.
Councilwoman?
Would you consider meeting with the police chief and allowing him to at least assess?
Absolutely. Absolutely. You know, one of the things that I have learned in running tender care in our business is I say to every single person that walks in, even if it's the smallest thing, even if you walk in and see one thing wrong, you're teaching me, every single day I am taught what I need to change it for the next client. It could be just as simple as the plant is dead in the front. They're teaching me what I need to do next to make the next experience perfect. I can meet with anybody and take their advice, and maybe I learn something totally new from them, and I take on that. I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon Young, you have more?
I think I'll stop there. I just want to see this succeed, and I think that, I think it can work, but it, you know, just really being open to, you know, things happen, and you want to be proactive and have those things in place, not reactive.
I agree. I totally agree with you, and I'm going to learn every day on this. And like you said, meeting with the chief of police, maybe that's the way I'll learn, you know, what signs. And maybe I even have a training class for each one of my employees, looking out for, what do you look for? I mean, we do that already in our business. What do you look for? What are you setting yourself up against? And that might be a great way. I am positive that I am going to go into this and learn more than I've ever learned, but I'm open to the challenge. I promise you, I'm open to the challenge to learn and make this a great place for Peoria.
Well, our police chief is here, if you'd like to talk to him later. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to commend you two for your very creative business plan. I hope very much that it's a success. I don't want to tell you how to run it. I would wonder whether you did have a look at downlighting?
We are looking at, we actually have bought lighting. It is 28, I think it's 25 feet up, and then another three feet are the lighting. We bought the lighting already, and the lighting, Farnsworth helped us with it. It is not candle lighting, it is not shadow out lighting, all the lighting does go down. We explained that in the last meeting we were with them.
But everything's under 30 feet.
Yes. The only thing that I am going to do after the 10 o'clock or the 11 o'clock shut-off is what I would like, is I would like to have ground lighting for the safety and the security of the place. So if something's going on, I plan to have cameras, and I need to be able to see with the cameras and stuff like that. So I would like to have ground lighting just for, like I said, the safety and the security of my employees, or even if there is somebody coming along that should not be there, still having it more safe than, so there'll be ground lighting at that time.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I wish you all the success in this, in this venture. I was just confused to, with your explanation, everything that you said is pertaining to kids. So is it only for kids or?
No, it's for everybody. That's what I said, families coming together. In that area, we do not have any outdoor ice cream. You look at, when you're going down Knoxville, we have, what is it, Elmo's or, I'm trying to think of the place. There is Emo's, there's places to go to get outdoor ice cream, to bring your kids, to bring your grandkids, to come and just sit and have ice cream, even if you don't want to do the putt-putt, even if you don't want to do the go-karts. I want little beautiful areas full of plants that you can just come and sit and enjoy your family and have ice cream, or maybe come in and get a pizza and just share it around a little pod, an outdoor pod, or birthday parties for the kids in that area.
Thank you. I actually also second what Councilwoman Gordon Young said. As a businesswoman, you wanted to make sure you go into a positive attitude. But as a governing body, we also want to make sure that you kind of have that in place before you start things. Things will go worse. So I would really recommend to see if you have some, some kind of safety issues, security issues, or kind of a go-to rulebook, something like that. I don't know, I have, I'm not in that business, but I really like what she said because it's always better to have something in place. I understand your enthusiasm, but to me, we should, if something happens, that's not the time we should go back and revisit. That's not how things should work. So I really would love to see something in, on paper before you start things, how you're going to safeguard, what kind of rules are you going to impose? How do you kind of give that, I would say, promise to your neighbors, saying that, okay, this is a very safe location? So I like to see those things beforehand. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much.
I take that into consideration. Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ironically, this summer, my son Sam and I went to Louisville, Kentucky to see the Louisville Slugger factory, which I thought was really cool. But the highlight for him was going to the world's largest go-kart track, which included mini-golf and batting cages, and he just blew me away at all of them, of course, and he still brags about his prowess around the track. So I think this is an amazing idea, and to have something like that coming into Peoria is something that I'm personally enthusiastic about. But I also am very cognizant of the concerns raised from the folks. So to hear that you're willing to go and spend the extra money to do the electric go-karts, that's phenomenal. I mean, my neighbor has an electric lawnmower, and I don't even hear him mowing, so I think that's, that's a great concession, the lighting. It sounds like, I know Farnsworth has worked with us in other areas that lighting is a concern, so I have confidence with that. My concern, I guess, is what happens, you know, I got two teenage boys, and Mr. Hoggies story about his daughter being at Northwoods Mall, I mean, that's something I don't think we can, we can ignore, and I do think that there needs to be a plan as Councilwoman Gordon... needs to be a plan. As Councilwoman Gordon Young and Valpula both mentioned, I, I, I think, I, I would really think that would be something that you would want to do to protect your investment as well. And that, you know, if it's possible, it's overkill at the beginning. It's always easier to backtrack than to add and to react because one bad experience will give you a bad reputation really soon. So I would, I would suggest that you, you meet with the police chief and, and have something in, in place before the opening.
I think after listening to all of you, that's a, it will be a definite because I think you guys are scaring me just a tiny bit, you know, because I am more of a Sunshine Roses person, you know, I tend to go that way in my personality. So this does make me feel like maybe this is something that I need to take a little more consideration. And I appreciate all your viewpoints and that you are going to now put my, I'll put my foot down and I'll do that. I think that having a plan before I start is, is pretty much a no, you know, I just have to do that at this point because I feel like I'm hearing all of you. And like I said, I'm, I'm a Sunshine Roses girl. So I'm hearing it and thinking, maybe this is something I need to take a little more consideration to.
And if I may continue.
Yes.
And thank, thank you for that, the, the acknowledgement. And, and having a 16 and 18 year old, I don't, I don't want them to be pegged at my kids these days. I don't want that either. Um, and seeing the kids in Louisville, I, that was just a blast. And, and families, kids of all ages there with their folks. So I, I think we, we need to prepare to keep them safe so that the, that element in them that might be more mischievous doesn't have the opportunity to come out.
I agree.
So thank you for your.
Sure. I really loved what you said. It was, is that I don't want to look back and say something bad happened. I want to look and say I was ready for it. And I think that's what hit home the most for me is it's just like at Tender Care, I'm always looking, what could happen? You know, I'm always preparing the staff, you know, we go through, we go through so much training there, you know, what could happen? And that's the same idea. I think that's what hit home the most to me is that that's where I need to, I need to stop and say, you know, sunshine, rainbows aside, let's, let's look at what could happen and protect the kids.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome. And I'd just like to comment before I turn it back over to you, uh, Councilman Allen. And, you know, it's been really an, an honor to see the engagement of, uh, the Larsons, Dr. Larson, Mrs. Larson, and, and the residents, the homeowners, um, the neighbors to come together and really try to hash things out, to, to talk about their concerns. And, you know, it was a few weeks ago when I was in a position to probably vote no on this based upon the concerns that I heard. Um, at that point, there was not a willingness to go to electric vehicles, which is a huge additional cost. Um, and so that was a big concern for me as well, uh, that there would be gas-powered loud noise. Um, the lighting concerns, I think that I've seen a lot of concessions made, a lot of due diligence, you know, in these meetings. And I think the concessions, even though it's not an ideal situation for anybody, you're not getting your ideal wish, um, the neighbors are not necessarily getting their ideal wish. I think a lot of concessions have been made. At one point, you were willing to put up some barrier if there was a gas-powered, um, EV, I mean, gas-powered go-karts. But you've moved from that to say there's not going to be major sound at all, maybe little to no sound from go-karts. I think that's huge. Uh, the lighting, the lower lighting, I think is, is important. But I agree with everything that I've heard about security, that you absolutely have to have a security plan because something may happen. We, we looked at situations that have happened at Northwoods Mall. We've looked at situations, entertainment at Elevate. You never want those situations to happen at, at your establishment. And the only way to keep them from happening is to have a strong security plan, a strong security presence. So, you know, I think you've heard that. And, um, because of those concessions, I, I think that, um, I can support this tonight, the vote. I know, again, it's not perfect for anybody, but compromise never is perfect. It, it's a compromise. And I, I think that the process had been one of mediation, great leadership by, uh, Councilman Allen and trying to make sure that everybody is heard, respectful dialogue, um, good listening on both parts. And I, I just, you know, I, I think this is a really good example of community compromise.
If I could say one more thing to.
Yes.
To the neighbors especially, I'm open to learn. If you guys hear something going on or, or a neighbor says, you know, this happened last night, come and talk to me. I'm, I want to learn. I want to figure out what we can do the best for the community. Um, if somebody hears, I know we have a couple of teachers that were in our meeting. If they hear something in the school, they're going to be the first ones to hear it. Pick up the phone. Let's, let's become a community again and talk to each other and tell each other what we need to do to be better. Let's, let's become better, just like us, you know, trying to figure out, I didn't think the go-karts would work. Mark finally find, made 10 more phone calls and found somebody that he could make them work. We can do this together. But I do think as a community, we've got to start coming together, hearing each other, speaking to each other. And if we have a concern, come to me and say, hey, I have this concern or I heard this, you know, and, and I think that's the biggest thing. Let's, let's bring our community back together on this.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Allen.
Uh, thank you.
Oh, before you go there, we got one more. Councilmember Vespa, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I echo, uh, what a, what a lot of my colleagues have said. I think there are a lot of good comments here. Um, and I hope that these comments aren't coming off as overly negative. Um, I, I think we're just trying to be realistic. Um, you don't want to be caught flat-footed. If something were to happen, it really would mar, uh, your business from the start. Um, we've, we've seen, you know, that happen before, uh, round one. Unfortunately, a guy got a bad reputation, um, due to something. Um, and, you know, you can correct after that, but, um, you know, the reputation, you're just going to, to try to be fixing that for, for months or years down the road. And it, it also will affect your neighbors', you know, property values as well if, if you have bad incidents like that. So we strongly encourage you to talk with the police chief, um, get, get some sort of, some sort of, uh, security plan in place. Um, I, I think we do appreciate the investment, the willingness to invest in our community, um, and give, you know, kids something to do. Um, I mean, I, I do think it is true that it's, it's a little different from Louisville Slugger, uh, where, you know, uh, teams, you know, roll off the bus and then roll back on the bus afterward. Um, I mean, this is something where, you know, there, there might be unaccompanied minors, you know, um, parents might drop them off for the day and, uh, they might roll, you know, around the track and then get a little bored or something. I mean, um, I, I, I like the optimism. I like the optimism. I like the willingness to invest, but, uh, I would strongly encourage you, uh, to get a plan in place.
I take that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen, take it from here.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone's, uh, comments, um, suggestions on this matter. Um, thank you to the Larsons who are investing private funds into this project. Um, have not asked for any financial support from the city of Peoria, which, um, we know in development is rare. Um, and so I appreciate them coming forth, appreciate you all taking the comments. Um, I will say, and I don't like to do amendments on the fly, but I do want to make an amendment to the special use that you do have a formalized security plan in place. I think that that's fair. I think based off of the comments around the horseshoe and the neighbors, I think that could be the last thing that brings this thing home. And so would you all be okay with me making that amendment to your special use permit?
Hundred percent. I've already, like I said, taken that on.
And we won't, we will ensure, and I promise, as the councilman of this district, that you will not be on your own to create that. We will work with the police chief, we'll work with Peoria resource officers. We did, we just did the same exercise with the tilted tent in Northwoods Mall. We want them to be successful. So we're not going to put you on an island and have you do this on your own. We're here for you. And so I, but I do want to make that a condition part of your special use permit.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, and again, I was very transparent with my position on this project, coming here with the neighbors. So there were any surprises that I felt once the electric go-karts, uh, came into play, that mitigated the noise concerns. Uh, we addressed the light, so that addressed some of the, the light pollution. I appreciate you all. Again, the concessions, um, Councilman Reganbuck talked about, the electric go-karts are not cheap. Um, it is an additional cost. And again, I appreciate you all compromised in being good neighbors. And then again, adding this formalized security plan that we will support you on as that third piece of that concession of the special use permit. I feel that this is going to be a great addition to District Four, the greater Peoria area. I plan on bringing my own family, uh, to this and look forward to seeing you all be successful. And I, again, appreciate the neighbors coming forth because again, this is what we need. We need collaboration. We need communication for development projects. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, item A of 2428-1.
Sir, a second, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Um, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Um, Councilmember Allen?
I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, item B of 2428-1.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cla, cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Allen?
I would like to make a motion to approve item 24, or excuse me, item C of, uh, item 2428-1, please.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots.
And lastly, I would like to.
Just a minute. Councilmember Allen.
I'm sorry.
We need your vote.
I was, I was in a zone, Mayor. I was in a zone. I was on a roll.
Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Allen?
Yes. And lastly, I would like to approve item D, again, adding the caveat that there will be a formalized security plan, uh, in place that we will collaborate with the Larsons on.
Uh, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes, uh, nope. Uh, Councilmember Seer?
Okay. Council, um, you, you're a yes vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
I have one more question. This one, Mr. Assistant, you talked about, I'm a member of one of the.
Talk to the city manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen, for your leadership very much. Um, Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash three fourteen is a communication from the city manager and corporation council with request to adopt an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with ACIA P L L C for a proposed Porsche automobile dealership at eight two one five North Allen Road within the Medina Plains Allen Road Business Park Tiff District Redevelopment Project area.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, move to defer, uh, the agenda item 24 dash three one four to be placed on the agenda at a further, uh, later council, uh, when the redevelopment agreement is signed by Porsche.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
If there's no additional unfinished business, we will be at new business.
Okay. Is there any new business? Councilmember Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, we denied six-site applications for selling liquor gas stations, liquor in gas stations. I think this is the first time ever I have seen six, uh, applications being turned down. So I wanted to offer, uh, clarification for the business owners who may be affected by this decision. Corporation Council, could you please, uh, explain the reason for the denial? I ask you for this clarification to emphasize that as a city, we aim to make decisions that are more rational. Importantly, this denial should not be viewed as a discouragement for other businesses considering reaching out with applications in the future.
Thank you for that question. Oh, thank you for that question, Councilman. Um, I'll explain all of the issues that came up. Um, because of some change in personnel, I had the opportunity to staff the liquor commission hearing for the first time. And on this matter, I spoke to each of the councilmen for the different locations. Um, all of the shell stations that are part of this set of requests are owned by the same, the actual physical facilities are owned by the same corporate entity, Axis Incorporated out of Louisville, Kentucky. They've owned those businesses for quite, the footprints for quite some period of time. Many of them, they've owned for many years. A few of them, they've acquired more recently. For many years, they were under common management as well, uh, by two different entities. Um, one Kamla Cower Convenience Incorporated and the other RSM Management. So seven cell stations within the city of Peoria were operating. Um, they were a constant source of effort on staff's part to collect taxes. Uh, many months, they would be one or two months behind, which would have city staff imposing fines or penalties for late payment of taxes. They would, uh, at times be cited for formal hearings with regard to their licenses to sell motor fuel, as well as one of the entities had a liquor license. So to take action against the licenses and they would pay, uh, the amounts due at the last moment from time to time. So we're quite familiar with the operations. Um, one of the operators, or the operator's representative, uh, individual named Jitender Singh was indicted a year and a half ago by the state of Illinois for failure to pay taxes. Um, that matter is set for trial now in February of next year. Um, Mr. Singh was operating the seven different footprints and they, um, had been filing returns but not making payments on the amounts due on a monthly basis, um, and would, again, pay at the last minute. In April of this year, they stopped filing returns for all of the premises and the city took action against them. Um, so when they stopped filing returns, um, they had prior to that filed returns that reflected a total amount due of about $131,000 in taxes. And those amounts are due and we're attempting to collect them through our collection agencies. Because of their failure to pay motor fuel tax returns, their failure to file, uh, the returns, the failure to pay the taxes due on those returns, and the fact that their license lapsed for those failures to pay returns, they were cited. And from April 1st of 2024 through June 17th of 2024, they, between all seven footprints, they amassed $800,000 in daily fines. Failure to pay tax returns carries significant daily fines. So with all of that past due amount, um, 131,000 in taxes we knew about, and daily fines for not filing tax returns, so we don't know the amount due from April through June, we were able to get an order entered against them for that tremendous amount in fines. Perfecting those requires us to file what's called, or to take action called a memorandum of judgment, which we were undertaking. And then we understood from different applications that the operator, which is separate than the ownership of the footprints, but the operator's transacted and changed hands. So the prior operator was Jitender Singh and the new operator is an individual named Bobby Singh, who applied for, um, who applied for, um, licensers of all seven footprints. Um, one of those footprints, uh, which is at 9109 North Allen Road, already had a, a site approval for a liquor license. So that liquor license was available in an over-the-counter transaction once the property went into a different form of ownership. A new corporation owned it. Um, so that license was issued and then they made application, Bobby Singh did, on behalf of the ownership entities. And now each one of these separate footprints is being operated by a different corporate entity. All, all of them are represented by Bobby Singh. Um, and again, all the footprints entity. All of them are represented by Bobby Singh. And again, all the footprints are still owned by Axis. So all those remaining six operations applied for site approval. Two of the sites were opposed by our city police department because of significant criminal activity on those sites. Five of the six sites were directly opposed by the councilmen of, for those districts in which those sites are present. The councilmen had different reasons for opposing that. The final site, the councilman didn't take a position in opposition and felt in fairness if another local entity had a liquor use, that this should be allowed to compete. That other nearby entity did not have a liquor use. And so that nearby other gas station is not a competitor on the liquor scale. By the way, we have 38 licensed gas stations in town. Only 10 of them have licenses to sell packaged alcohol. So it isn't automatic, and it's not every place. When I appeared, one of the reasons that one of the council people had opposition was because of this history of not payment of taxes. So I informed the Liquor Commission that the failure to pay taxes has the, you know, the legal department had a loss to be able to collect those from the operators. Now we have a new coordinated set of operators. To my view, the only entity really directly benefiting by this operation is the entity that owns all the facilities. And that it's not consistent with the welfare of the city of Peoria to issue additional privileges to an enterprise that appears to be profiting without paying their taxes to the city. I told the Liquor Commission that the legal department, the Corporation Council's position on this entity and these applications would change over time if the new operator showed that they could comply with the law, would pay their taxes on time, and establish themselves as a good corporate citizen. So our recommendation from our department was to deny these licenses until they could establish that. And the liquor code indicates that licenses can be withheld if it's not consistent with the welfare of the city. And I felt strongly that in this circumstance, because of the history and the coordinated ownership of the actual facilities, that there's a responsible party there that can step forward and guarantee the city if we can engage them in that conversation. So we would look forward to talking with Axis and the operator and getting some clarity on putting the city in a more secure position, so I don't have to explain to the council in the future why I can't collect $130,000 in taxes and $800,000 in fines. So that's what happened. And these are unique circumstances. I don't expect them to repeat themselves. As the council knows from my conduct here, we recently took action to allow us to be on a better footing to collect fines if there's common ownership between the operator and the ownership of the property. And you can look forward to me developing more devices for us to create a more secure collection mechanism when we extend privileges to individuals to sell things, so we can be guaranteed that the public is seeing the taxes being collected. You let a lawyer go on and on earlier, so thank you for giving me all the time I needed, Your Honor. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good information. Councilman Valpula?
Thank you, Corporation Council. The reason I just wanted to bring it out is we should not be seen as anti-business. All we have to show is the rationale behind our judgment because, you know, there was a very interesting observation that was, a very interesting scenario that was presented to me, which I outlined to you a couple minutes, a couple hours back. Peoria Heights and Peoria are separated by one single road. And right opposite that road, you will have gas stations with liquor, and when it comes to Peoria, we don't have it. So when you see certain things like that, people will come back to you and ask, do I qualify for that? The decision that we took should not be discouraging for them to come back and ask. Maybe the council, again, I say it all depends on the constituents as well as the district level councilmen to approve or disapprove, but we should never take away the right of a business to come back and say, I wanted to do that. The entire exercise is to make a point that we are not being punitive on the businesses who wanted to extend their services, but we are very rational and balanced when we make the choice. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mayor, if I could just add?
Yes.
We would not be opposed to another gas station having a liquor license.
Right, right.
Because Illinois law doesn't permit us to withhold it on that basis.
Yes.
And that is not the rationale with which we approach these. There were significant criminal matters in two of the different footprints, concerns about criminal activity from a couple of the other locations from the councilmen of the districts. And so there were a number of reasons to oppose these, but primarily at this point, we want to engage in a discussion with the corporate entities that operate these to make certain that the city's tax collections are secure.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rickenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On a lighter note, tomorrow, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have a ribbon cutting on Wisconsin Avenue.
Yay.
At 11:30 in the morning, Wisconsin Avenue between McClure and Nebraska will be reopened to the public. A project we've talked about for a long time. I've championed for a long time. I see one of my East Bluff, aka the mayor of the East Bluff, in the audience tonight, Mr. Rick Owen. But I'm just thrilled. If any of you are out and about at 11:30 tomorrow, please stop by. We'll be at Arcadia and Wisconsin. And I couldn't let this opportunity pass to again thank Representative Gordon Booth for the $3 million influx that we got to help finance that. That project will be continuing in two years north from McClure to Forest Hill. So the work is not done, but the first phase is done ahead of schedule. The other thing I just wanted to recognize is Children's Home, they were at the Planning Zone and Commission last week also, and this will be coming to us in a couple weeks, but I just wanted to get it out there for the public who might not be as attuned to that. They're going to be building two supervised independent living facilities on their current footprint there on Knoxville. And as kids transition out of foster care, oftentimes they don't know where to go. And homelessness in that population is something that we want to do everything in our power to help prevent. So Children's Home has a great project in store, and we'll be talking more about that in a couple weeks. But I just wanted to recognize their commitment to the youth in our community in battling homelessness in an area that we don't often think that there's homelessness. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great news. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While we're on road improvements, I was at the Moss Avenue, Moss Neighborhood Association meeting the other night, and there were some questions about the status of MacArthur Bridge reopening. And I didn't know the exact date, but it was good to hear that, while it's a major thoroughfare, people up the hill and everywhere use that. Is there an update on that, sir, as to when that's going to?
That road should be open here in the next week or so.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I saw some painting on it today, so that's good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And I'll, oh, okay, I'll be last with the new business item. You know, I just, it may have been mentioned before, but I want to acknowledge the work that's been put into the fire department's community risk assessment. And this document, oh my God, there's so much history in it. I mean, it goes back to when the Fire Department of Peoria first started. It has a copy in the back of the original charter of the city of Peoria. It talks about, it really does a lot of risk assessment analysis, and it talks about, well, it brings us up to date with the new firehouses or the new locations of these houses, the modernization that has taken place over time, the area of service, the boundaries, the partnerships. It's just so rich with information that is a keeper. So I wanted to applaud and have you come forth just briefly, Chief, and if you could just talk a little bit about this magnificent document.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I'll be brief. I know it's been a long night. I do appreciate the fact of you acknowledging that's a lot of hard work and effort that's been put forward by our accreditation team, which is led by Division Chief Nate Rice. That's a culmination of about six to nine months of work in putting that all together in our standard of cover. It's an important document for us. It's a live document that will be analyzed every single year as our needs and our operations change. I do appreciate the acknowledgement, though.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We are on to citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Okay, we have just one card. Mr. Jesse McGowan. You want to be first. You're first and only.
Good afternoon. Jesse McGowan Jr., 707 East Thrush. What's bringing me here tonight is we, and I mean you, because I already am, we need to do something about our children. You know, 10-year-olds getting killed, teenagers getting life, approximately life impenetratory, and there's more that we can do. And I'm here tonight, I'm not going to be able to complete this night, but I'm talking about 10, 12 years of work and tens of thousands of dollars put into research that I've conducted on my own, that I'm going to have to come back two or three more times to talk to you about it. But I'm going to start off by talking about what I have accomplished. And I'm glad the chief is here, because he's going to verify some of the stuff that I'm going to tell you, even though he don't know it yet. I've had a program in my block for the last probably 12, 15 years, when it really got bad up in that area. If you will look at the crime stats from the coronavirus from last year, to my left, to my right, and behind me, my block, there hasn't been a gunshot out in that block in years, many years. And that's the only block. As a matter of fact, the recent one, I could look out of my window and watch Republic Street, out of my window, what the shooting was the other night. And that's ironic, because the program that I use up there, mostly, basically, is warm weather. And I told some of my people Friday that I was suspending it for the winter. And when I said that, you know, something coming to mind, I hope nothing will happen by me saying this. Sure enough, Sunday, there's been two shootings. One, like I said, blocked from me, and another farther out. So I took that to mean that rather than suspending it to expand it. So the reason I'm here tonight is to tell you the part that I need you to play in that expansion. But to do that, I have to tell you first where I am. You know, it's about building relationships. I have a personal relationship with about 50 children, young boys, children from mid-teens down. And that was done because of the program, one of the three programs that I'm operating here. What I would like to do is expand it into other areas. Here's what, I'm going to prove that it works. We have, in the East Bluff, crime has gone down significantly this year, the last part of this year. And you're going to hear it's gone down over citywide. But if you will look, I don't have any stats in the data to back this up, but I want the chief to admit whether this is wrong or right, that East Bluff are the hot areas that were on that map. That East Bluff, that all of those areas has seen considerably less crime over the last half of this year. And I'm going to read you a letter to just let you know I'm not latching on to something. This is a text that I sent out. It says, "The last half of 2024 will see considerably less crime than the last half of 2023 on the East Bluff." This was sent out June 6 at 5:06 PM, and it was sent to the chief of police. And had to come true for that. This was during a time when the crime was being shot, when it was shooting almost all the time up through East Bluff. But since this has come out, crime has gone way down. And I made that prediction in June, and I stand behind, I say, and it's by doing what I'm doing now. What I want to do is expand this, you know, by expanding what I've done, I've expanded it to my neighborhood, by my other neighborhoods, because my parents have asked me to. So, you know, I went to my block for $20 a week to my whole neighborhood now for $150 a week. But the crime is way, way, way down in these, I mean, other people go take credit for, that's fine. But I know 100% certain that I have made a difference in that, because I've intervened personally in at least a dozen altercations this year alone, through the network that I've made through those people. So what I'm going to need from you all, you know, going and trying to detail like it, because it's a multi-prom thing, trying to explain it to you is not going to work. What I would need you all to do, assign a person that when, I'm pretty sure that there's going to be some antiviral money coming out. First of all, I want to make sure, I don't want the money. I'm not going to accept, I've got a program that will work perfectly. The needs are special, two places, Harrison Home and Manuel High School, those places need it. But I need somebody from the city that has the authority to come and watch me at one hour a day, at least two days, two, maybe three days a week, just to watch what I'm doing, because I can't explain it. Everybody that has, when I try to explain to somebody, they visualize what it looks, what I'm saying. And then every time they get there and see it, they say, well, that ain't nothing like I thought it was. So trying to explain it to you, go get the wrong impression, but if somebody, I've got a person in mind that works with the police department. I don't know if the chief will release him or not. But if it would, that person would be the perfect person, just could you spare that person? If that person recommends that to you, says, no, I don't think this is something we should do, I'll drop it. But that person comes back to you, strongly says, hey, I think this is something we definitely need to do, I want your commitment that we'll go forward with it. If it's somebody you trust, because I'm convinced that it will work. As a matter of fact, I know it will work. I've just, I work it every day. So I know it's going, I know it's going to help, it's going to reduce violence. I've got three age groups I can target, using different tactics. I can go from the mid-teens down, I can go from the mid-teens to the early adult and early adults upwards, depending on which area you want to work it in. And like I say, this is a program that's developed here. Like I said, I've been doing a combination of this for years. It's developed here in Peoria, it works for Peoria. Can't nobody come out of Chicago or New York, tell us how to solve Peoria's problem, because we got different problems here. This is one here, and as I say, this is going to be free, you don't need no money, and it's going to be very, very cheap to run. So all I want to do is get somebody, an objective person, to take a look at it, and then we go from there. And if that person says, they will go into detail, if not, we'll drop the whole thing. There's nothing wrong with that.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we will be adjourned.
Can I get a motion? Okay, moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots.